Okay, sure. Mr. Witherspoon?
Here.
Mr. Goldstein?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Mr. Mancini?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Wells?
Here.
And Mr. Shulman?
Here. All right. Um. Our first order of business is a public hearing. Twenty twenty one dash oh one R slash S P R A P two LLC. One twenty five Richards Avenue includes a text amendment. A special permit and use in the B zone. Again, if we if we have any folks here who have not attended these hearings before. The developer and developers representatives will present the program they have planned. Throughout that presentation commissioners may may have questions. Once they have completed their presentation. We will open it up to the public for comment. For those who are here from the public, you get one opportunity to speak, so we encourage you to ask all of your questions. So so that you don't try to come back in and have to ask additional questions. All we ask is a certain amount of politeness, no inappropriate behavior while you're commenting. Once the public, everyone in the public who wishes to speak has had an opportunity. The developer will have an opportunity to respond to the comments that have been made. The commission members may also have additional questions as well. And when we've completed that, we will close the public hearing. With that, let's open it up to developers attorney. Adam Blank to begin the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Adam Blank of Wauwawsee Rosen, Queston and Kuryansky. I live here in Norwalk, attorney for RAP two LLC, which is the owner of two and a half, two point five four acres of property located at one twenty five Richards Avenue. Going to share my, if I can get permission to share my screen. Thank you. Okay, is that up for everybody?
Yes, we can see.
Okay, so as I said, RAP two owns one twenty five Richards Avenue, which is here and comes down to Connecticut Avenue is just down here. Next to us at one twenty three Richards Avenue is a congregate care facility. Our property, as well as the next couple this way and up are in the B residence zone. Where depending on how you measure between point two and maybe point two five, or maybe even a little bit further to Connecticut Avenue from various points along our site here. It's a vacant parcel that we hope to develop with ten higher end duplex style senior or elderly housing. Your ranks use the term elderly housing. I may interchangeably refer to it as senior housing. It would be two units in each building, five buildings. Richards Avenue, then running down to this is the Five Mile River here. Here's a view of what they would all essentially look like from the front, each with its own one car garage and additional parking space out front for a second vehicle. They happen to have two. Here's a view of what the rear would look like. Just to give you a general sense of the what the property would look like. We think this development would be an attractive alternative for seniors, allowing them to age in place in handicap accessible homes. They are all first floor masters. And they would have all the necessary services readily available to the residents with a simple phone call or email to the management company, giving them a lot more freedom and a safe place to age and access to quality care at a much lower cost than you would have if you were at a congregate care facility. Residents would have the ability to have housekeeping, professional caregiving, meals and other supportive services, as well as management would handle all of the exterior maintenance of the dwellings and landscaping. I'm going to try to give you a a little bit more of an overview on the on the project. Then we're going to have David Herbst talk to you a little bit about the senior housing market. He is a appraiser who specializes in senior housing to talk to you a little bit about the the demand and the need for this kind of product here in Norwalk and in Connecticut. Matt Pop, who put this together, who's the landscape architect, he'll just briefly overview for you the landscaping and the screening that we've got on the site. Len DeAndrea, the project engineer, will also speak briefly to you. We do have Mike Galante, who's on the on this meeting, but he's not planning on giving presentation unless you ask for one. He certainly can answer any questions you have on traffic. But as you know, this is a small development with, you know, ten units on where we've got seventy something units here and much higher density uses all around. And as you have his traffic report showing that there'll be no no impact on traffic from this development. We also have Jerry Efrin from Gray Rock Homes, who's one of the developers on the call. And Clay Fowler from Spinnaker may or may not be on. I know he's traveling and if he has service, he'll be on, and if he doesn't, he won't. We do have approvals from Wetlands. And there are, there's a water course in Wetlands here. We have approval from them and a permit that was issued just today. We have got, we were in front of the planning commission a week or so back. And there was a fair amount of discussion in front of them about the tax change. It was unanimously approved by the planning commission. And I'll note that what appeared to be the biggest, not necessarily concern, but talking point from the planning commission was essentially the fact that we're only proposing ten units and that that they that while it was gonna, while it was a step at fulfilling the need for senior housing, that the need was far greater than the ten units that we proposed. And that there there should be more. The did get sign offs from the building department and the health department. We've received comments from D P W that were fairly minor. We're addressing, we believe we've addressed those and are waiting on their final sign off. W P C A asked for some standard flow monitoring, which we are under but hasn't expressed any finally, the fire department got back to us yesterday with no concerns other than they wanted verification on the driveway measurements to make sure that the access was fine for the fire apparatus. Again, Len DeAndrea, the engineer, has looked at this and we, again, we don't see any issues and we're giving fire back the number so that they can give their final sign off. But of course, we are happy with any approval that has a condition that we obtain those CAC approvals. As I mentioned, in front of you are two applications. One is for the site plan approval and the special permit approval, and the other is for the tax change. The tax change would refine the definition of elderly housing to include units such as these presented that are specifically designed for and occupied by elderly persons, offering housekeeping, professional caregiving, meals and other supportive services, as well as exterior maintenance of the dwelling and landscaping. And then we've asked that that be permitted in the B resident zone. The initial application was fairly simple in just saying that it would be permitted in the B elderly housing units would be permitted in the B resident zone, subject to a minimum lot size of two acres with six thousand two hundred fifty square foot minimum size of land area per unit. Your staff has looked at that and proposed some revisions to that that are set forth here in red. I'll go through those after Dave Herbst gives his presentation, but I think I think I'll just point out, it seemed obvious to us that there was a need for this type of housing. But we do want, you know, you to be convinced of it as well. And so we did have Mr. Herbst do a market analysis. I think I'd like to let him at this point take over in the presentation and then I'll do a little follow up before we move on to the rest of the team.
Attorney Blank, a quick housekeeping question. Typically, during the the early portion of public hearing, the attorney for the developer, whoever's representing the developer, will indicate whether the letters were sent out to adjoining property owners. I just wanted to confirm that that's the case.
My apologies. Yes, that is the case, and we've green cards have been returned to your staff. All the notices did go out.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Are you all considering adding more units to the to the app, to the space, given the conversation with planning?
So. No, but there's a but 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 maybe so. We don't believe that we can add more units based upon the the way that the text amendment is drafted to our site here at one twenty five. We 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 would, if we we would, though, my clients recently acquired forty Fulham Road, which is, here's Westport Avenue, you know, the Pepperidge Farm building. Whole Foods is right down here. So they've acquired forty Fulham. This is also in the B zone. And on forty Fulham, this this was acquired with the thought that they would do a subdivision here. But the clients are would are willing to see how the development goes at one twenty five. And if if that if it's successful and if as they, you know, start marketing it, if they're getting good feedback, then they then they absolutely would like to look at doing another development at forty Fulham for senior housing. In order to make that work, and I'm sort of jump a little out of order. In order to to make that work, one of the things that your staff had in here was this highlighted in yellow, the subject property shall be located within point two five miles of a major or minor principal or arterial road. And you'll see that staff says that they've highlighted this because I do not feel it's necessary, but have left it in for discussion purposes. We would hope and ask that you not that you strike that two out. And that if you insist on having a the properties be within a certain distance of a major or minor principal or arterial road, that you bump it up from a quarter of a mile to a third of a mile, which would ensure that forty Fulham is captured in that area. It also, we did have some issues about when you're measuring a quarter of a mile or a third of a mile. Is it from the closest point to Connecticut Avenue? Is it from the furthest point? Is it from access to Fulham? When you get to Fulham, is it a long Fulham? Or is it at a right angle down? Or is it as the as a crow flies? And just in in looking at those, we were confident that if it was no requirement or a third of a mile, we're fine on both applications. And on on both applications, we would, if there's going to be a criteria for a distance, we would strongly prefer it be a third. It's a long winded answer, but I was going to give you that spiel anyway, so you got it earlier than than anticipated.
Thank you.
Okay. Unless there's more, if I can turn it over to Dave.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to share my screen. I have a brief presentation here. So I'm just going to go through a brief update on the senior housing market and touch on some of the some of the trends that have been materializing over the last decade or so and moving into the through twenty forty. So first, just in terms of the the drivers of the senior housing market. And I've really identified three points here and I'll expand on them a little bit throughout the presentation. First, on the on the demand side is just taking a look at the regional demographic trends, specifically as it relates to the senior population. And on the supply side is just looking at the the supply and types of the existing senior housing stock. And then finally, I want to touch on some some changing consumer preferences, as well as how that ties into a state of Connecticut initiative as it relates to long term care. And that's known as long term care rebalancing. And really, these three factors combined is is what's driving the market as we as we move forward here. In terms of the demographics, I think this is, we've been living in this in this in this dynamic with the with the growing senior population. And that's projected to continue through twenty forty. This is the this is data from the Connecticut State Data Center at UConn. And the the number of residents over sixty five within the labor market area is projected to increase six point seven percent by twenty forty. And within the seventy five and older cohort, the growth rate is higher between point six percent and one point one percent annually during that same period. And this is at a time when the same data set is projecting basically flat population or even a decline, the the data center is projecting a decline of point four percent through twenty forty in aggregate. So while the senior population continues to grow, overall population relatively stagnant, so an increasing percentage of the population will be within this sixty five and older cohort. And in terms of the the types of senior housing, and I'm just going to talk about four of the major property types, and I'll move from sort of the lowest level of services provided to the highest. And also really the the cost associated with with these with these property types move in that same direction. So so first, active adult communities or age restricted communities, which really started to to come online in the in the early mid two thousands, which are similar to a typical condo or planned unit development. They can be townhouses or detached units. And they're beyond just exterior maintenance. They really don't offer many services to residents. There may be some common recreation facilities. But really, the distinguishing factor here relative to a typical condo development or P U D is just that one of the residents, typically one resident, needs to be fifty five or older. And then moving up in terms of level of services provided are independent living facilities. These are typically in congregate settings, so buildings, you have about a hundred and twenty units is is the sweet spot. And and they have private apartments. There are, there are studios, some one bedrooms, and there are services provided to residents, meals, some transportation, social activities, that do have common areas within the buildings. And like I said, typically in in larger larger congregate settings. And very similar in terms of the physical plant, and sometimes they can be combined with independent living facilities is assisted living, which layers on an additional level of services, provides residents, if they so require assistance with activities of daily living, dressing, bathing, medication management, some routine nursing care. And then often there'll be a dedicated wing or sometimes in a standalone facility. There'll be services for what's called memory care, residents with Alzheimer's or dementia. And these units are typically secured or these wings are typically secured and have sort of the highest level of supervision within the assisted living segment. And then finally, there's skilled nursing facilities, which cater to two populations, the the long term care population, which is funded through either Medicaid or private pay. And then short term rehab, which are people who are recovering from an injury or an illness and require services on a short term basis, typically funded through Medicare for a three week period or so. And and these facilities offer the full gamut of services, all types of therapies, physical therapy, occupational, speech therapy, full time nursing care, medical supervision, dental care, all provided within a congregate setting. Typically, anywhere from, I think Norwalk has a sixty unit facility, and some of them could be as high as two hundred units, typically in that same kind of range, about a hundred, a hundred and twenty is where where most of these facilities are in terms of bed counts. This is a graphic that's put together by SeniorLiving.org and just this sort of visual representation of the different property types. And on the X axis here is moving from left to right to the higher level of care and supervision. And on the Y axis is the level of cost. So you see here at the lower left is independent living. Then as we move to the middle, assisted living, and up at the top right would be the skilled nursing, which represents the highest level of care, highest cost. And I just want to point out this oval here at the bottom, in home senior care, which really runs the spectrum in terms of level of care and supervision, as well as there is a range in cost. And really, what what that represents is just a resident aging in place and having either a home health aide or some homemaker services that allow that resident to to remain independent and in their home. And again, that that obviously it's personalized towards the needs of of that particular resident. Just to touch on the cost of cost of actual cost of care, this is in the Bridgeport area from the two thousand nineteen Genworth Cost of Care Survey. And you'll see here off to the right is the nursing home care. These are monthly costs. So the average monthly cost for nursing home care, about fifteen thousand a month. Assisted living, about sixty three fifty. And then to the left here, we have part time homemaker, home health aide, and then full time, so either twenty hours a week, forty four hours a week. And those costs range from roughly two thousand a month to about forty five hundred a month. Now, these, the home health services are exclusive of the housing cost. But even when you factor in housing costs, still still much more affordable relative to nursing care. And depending on how much the the level of of support needed can also be competitive with assisted living. And I the sixty three fifty is sort of an average. I mean, the costs can move up if it's a resident that requires a higher higher level of service that can easily get into the eight nine thousand dollar range. So these these home health services can can be an affordable way to for residents to to age in place and get the services that that they need. In terms of the the state's initiative, the the long term care rebalancing, it's it's, in part, it's a response to a shift in consumer demand. And there's been survey after survey that have come out over the last decade that just indicates time and time again that consumers do prefer to age in place. And part of this initiative is is in response to that shift in in demand. And the strategy is to just increase choice into where these long term services and supports are received. And this program is is really targeted towards supporting cost efficiencies in the Medicaid program. But it's going to have implications on the wider market and it's it's in response to, as I said, these these consumer consumer preferences that that represent more than than just the Medicaid market. In terms of the goal for the state and the long term care rebalancing, they're looking to transition residents from institutional to home and community based system. So basically moving residents from skilled nursing into a home and community based system, or at least allowing that giving that choice to to residents. And their their target is to have over eighty percent, eighty two point three percent of Medicaid enrollees receiving their long term care services within this home and community based system by twenty forty. And this initiative has really started over the last decade or so. Right now, about two thirds of the enrollees, Medicaid enrollees are within receiving services within the H T B S. And that represents about half of the Medicaid spending on long term care. So it's clear that it's more affordable. And there are cost efficiencies in delivering care in these home and community based settings. In terms of the impact of this initiative, the biggest impact is is going to be a most direct impact, I should say, is is a reduced demand for skilled nursing beds. The state's projecting about eleven hundred forty three less beds in the labor market area and about six thousand less nursing home beds demanded within the state by twenty forty. And that represents about a twenty five percent reduction in total beds demanded. There's about twenty five thousand beds in the state right now. And some of the challenges that that the state Connecticut has has identified, and I think this is really where this dovetails into the zone text amendment that's that's before you. One challenge is just providing a workforce to service this growing home and community based segment of the market. So transitioning the existing workforce into these home and community based setting. And then just being able to provide accessible housing to allow residents to age in place. And so as as it relates to the to the text amendment, it is consistent with the consumer preferences and state initiatives. Everything in terms of consumer demand, there's a large segment of the market that's looking to age in place. And the state is certainly responding to that, at least as it relates to the to the Medicaid program and encouraging this this transition to progress. The text amendment facilitates or could facilitate accessible housing development with services for the senior population, so really touching on the two challenges that the the state has identified in meeting their goals. And finally, it provides a lower density option relative to congregate housing. You know, as we've all read and and seen over the course of the last year, the congregate housing and in particular skilled nursing and to some degree assisted living has been impacted by by COVID. And it stands to reason that that, just like the general market is shifting to, in some cases, lower density, that there's going to be an increase in demand for for lower density options in in the senior housing market as well, while still allowing these services to to be provided to to allow residents to to age in place. So that's that's the conclusion of my presentation. I'm happy to elaborate on anything or answer any questions if 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 there are any at this point.
I just wanted to get a sense for a second on just some basic facts, since this is a public hearing and that way the public just sort of knows. How many people are suspected to be living in this facility? Like, if you were to fill all of the units, like, how many people are we talking about here?
Josh, if you don't mind me answering that, so there's ten units. Um, so if we, I don't, I I I know that we don't have an exact number, but they're designed so that you could have, you could have a couple. I mean, it's senior housing, so you you're, we're not expecting there to be school kids or many children in the complexes. So you're talking about ten to twenty sort of residents, a sum of whom uh likely would have, at least on a part time basis, um, an aide um being there. So so, I mean, I guess in theory, you could have up to thirty people, might be a a guesstimate, but it's it's a small number. Um, and there's, there's not gonna be the little, if any, traffic from it. Uh, there's plenty of parking. Um, it's not gonna be school kids, no strain on the the school budgets.
I have a question, and I don't know if you'll be able to answer this or not. The the residents that you plan on filling, or excuse me, the developer plans on filling, would those be Norwalk residents or people in surrounding areas? Would you most, most suspect to come in and and live?
Um, Jerry, do you wanna take a crack at that? Jerry's one of the developers.
Uh, sure. Hey, Adam. Um, we're always surprised, you know, we we plan on uh most assisted living facilities have a a demographic ring that they draw around their projects or their proposed projects. And uh, you know, that that can range from two to five miles depending on the, you know, the density and and whether it's an urban setting or not. So um, w- we expect something similar. Um, whether whether we have people, current residents that are trading down uh or residents coming in from adjoining communities in order to take advantage of this unique product, uh, we honestly don't know.
Um, if 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 there's not another question, I'll go on with a little more of the presentation. Um, so so in addition to what uh Dave mentioned, I think hopefully um persuades you folks that there is a demand for uh the product. It it also, um, the P O C D for Norwalk, um, I think, uh, pretty clearly um identifies a need for maybe not the identi- this exact um project, but um, but but certainly for additional senior housing and additional housing options. It uh states that uh the population's aging as baby boomers move into retirement. Um, as the elderly population increases, quote, "Some will desire or require new housing options." That um Norwalk should have a strategy that maintains a variety of neighborhood types and housing choices through a variety of mechanisms. That we ought to identify potential markets for empty nesters and aging seniors who want to stay in Norwalk and encourage housing for that market. Downtown in Sono have attracted some empty nesters, others may want to downsize, but would prefer other options, which this would fill. Um, also, as part of a zoning rewrite, we should explore innovative housing types such as cottage communities and create zoning and design standards. Cottage communities provide modest sized housing as infill on vacant or underside lots designed to give a single family experience. Now, I'm not sure this is exactly a cottage community, but it's certainly uh in exploring an innovative housing type for uh uh senior and elder and and the elderly. The um, I did, if I can share the screen once more. In, just a couple of things to just point out on the, the, the text change as proposed and amended by um staff. Uh, the the, number one, at first, I think there's a typo here at the subject property. The three, I think, should be struck out, has a minimum of two acres, which we have no issue with. As I mentioned earlier, number two, we we are, we would really like to see that either removed, which I think your staff has said that they're fine with, or if it's gonna remain, to please make it a third of a mile, which would um allow the full in site um to uh be included in this as a potential site for future development, which of course would still have to come before you with a special permit application. The the density is i- is fine, which this density, this proposed matches the density that already exists for this zone for single family homes, single and two family units, it's fine with us. Five is certainly fine with us. Um, uh, seven and eight are also acceptable. Six, I just wanna point out, um, so there's two conditions in six that are proposed. At twenty five percent, the property must be set aside as a conservation area and forty percent of the site is open area or green space. We we have no issue when we meet the forty percent open space requirement and we have no issue with setting aside twenty five percent of the property as a conservation area. And um, in our zoning uh location survey, we have depicted uh twenty five percent for the uh conservation area, um, which includes the the river and then upland of the river towards the the back of the rear uh buildings. The only little hitch that uh came up uh today when we saw the staff memo was that um in the text change language, um, it's always used the term conservation area, which we understood as um requiring us to show a conservation area and honor that as a conservation area, which we'd be subject to on an approval. In your, if you were to consider this tonight and act on it, in the draft resolution to approve, one of the conditions is that there be a conservation easement, be approved by the Conservation Commission and filed in the land records prior to the issuance of any zoning permits. We we we, in all honesty, it was just a miscommunication, but we we didn't recognize that that was something that was being sought. Um, and so we've gotten Conservation Commission approval for our wetlands permit. We have not begun any discussions with them on a conservation easement, um, because we just didn't think that we needed that. We thought that the conservation area served the same uh purpose. Um, so my ask to you tonight is, if you do um act on the application, which we hope that you will and look favorably on it, that you either eliminate this criteria B and leave it as a conservation area. Um, if you're going to want it to be a conservation easement, and again, I I don't think there's much of any difference between the two, but if you, if you do really want it to be a conservation easement, it is um really important to us that you um allow that conservation easement. Changing the timing on that, right now it reads prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. So we would have to have that approved before we can start any construction. We would rather, or we would strongly prefer that if you're gonna require an easement, that it be an easement that um we give to you um at the time that we go to get our certificate of occupancy. Um, so at the end of construction, I don't think it prejudices um the city or the commission in any way by changing the timing and from our, and um the clients are quite anxious to get going with construction. They have a um contract with um This Old House, the like TV show, those folks, um, to uh that This Old House wants to do a segment on this uh project. And the clients would be getting some uh valuable consideration from This Old House in terms of uh construction materials, either for free or at a discount in exchange for um create, creating this as a model and 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 having the uh filming done here by This Old House. But in order to do that, they have got to meet a very tight schedule for time from This Old House. That is um, that's hard for them to meet if you were to approve this project tonight. And any delay before being able to get a zoning permit makes it almost impossible to meet. Um, so again, if you're gonna require an easement, please make it um an easement that that's given when we get uh our our C O at the end of construction. But but again, we would prefer to just leave it as the language is in the text amendment of just a conservation area, which you already have uh shown on the uh plans. And and the lastly, and then I'll, I'll, I'll let the landscape architect talk for a couple of minutes. Um, in the B zone, delete it. Maybe I've closed it out, but in the B zone uh already, um, a a lot of uses are permitted. As as I mentioned already, you can have a single family house on six thousand two hundred fifty square foot lot area. On this site, based on its size, that would produce seventeen single family homes. Uh, as I think y'all know, there's some wetlands and there are some requirements as to how you have to lay out a subdivision that would not allow us to actually put in seventeen single family homes. But we we could put um, we could put in uh quite a number of single family homes on the site that would be about the same as the ten units that we've got now. We also could subdivide and have uh six to eight single family homes and two large daycare centers. Um, all of those other uses, those would create, I think, more traffic and economically would be worse for the town than this uh proposed development. Similarly, at one twenty three Richards, then the next door property, also zone B residence by special permit, we could do what they did and we could create a a sister facility uh next door of congregate care. Uh, they've got seventy two units, but they're a little larger. We could do about fifty units of congregate care uh at this site. Again, we're only asking for ten, so we don't think that as far as density goes or any of the negative impacts that sometimes go with uh development, that this ten units uh would actually produce any of those negatives. We think it's the text change and the special permit applications are good for us, they're good for Norwalk, comply with the P O C D. Um, and meets all of your requirements and we hope that you'll approve both this evening. Um, with that, um, I'd like to just let Matt Pop briefly talk about the landscaping and then um we'll let Len Deandra talk about the engineering and we'll uh be complete.
Uh, thank you, Adam. Adam, could you put up the uh landscape plan if you can share that? If you have that or? Again, Matthew Pop, Landscape Architect, Environmental Land Solutions. And we're here in Norwalk, um, also, I prepared the landscaping plan for this. Just gonna start. Yep, that's it. Just gonna start at this uh streetscape and kind of work our way from uh right uh to left. Uh, we have a a couple of street trees, large growing oak trees along the street. Between uh the shade trees and the first building, we have a row of evergreen trees to kind of screen the project from Richard's Ave. Um, when you go down the drive, there's a, you have a large growing uh red maples, uh, which are the larger circles. And the smaller ones are a number of flowering trees, mainly what they're cro- king hawthorns. Um, we're using a lot of native plants, you can, these are all native so far. Along the southern property line, there's already a row of existing uh evergreen trees and we're just infilling uh some of those. Uh, mainly between the third building, there's some evergreens that we're proposing in there. Again, a lot of those that have been highlighted now are existing, uh, and we're just infilling. Um, to sort of the rear of the property along the wetland buffer, there's really no disturbance back there, which is somewhat unique. Usually all the drainage structures were put down in the low area. But in this project, uh, they weren't there except for like a level spreader. So that wetland buffer is gonna remain undisturbed, there's no uh foot trail or anything like that uh in there. So kind of like that. Uh, we're not proposing any uh site lighting on this, uh, so we're not worried about light trespassing off the site. I don't think uh we need them for this, uh, there'd probably be a fixture at the doors, I think that will light it up sufficient. Again, mainly using uh native uh plants, a lot of the shade trees are larger growing, good for wildlife habitat. And I think we have the screening on the south, we have some screening on the north and screening from the Richards Ave. And again, we've got the wetland buffer in the back which screens the property from the west. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Len, you wanna speak briefly on the engineering?
Sure. Uh, can I, can you bring up a a sheet or should I, can we share my screen?
Uh, if you can share yours, it might be easier.
Okay.
If not, I can, I can try to get it up on mine.
All right, let's see, share a screen. And I think I've got it here. There we go. Everybody, everyone can see that?
Yep.
Yeah. So uh Leonard Deandrea, professional engineer in Connecticut and the engineering and surveying firm for this project. Um, uh, Matt started from Richards Avenue, I'm gonna go in reverse and start from the river corridor, since that's a uh a very sensitive location. And uh essentially what we have is, oh, let me enlarge this a tad more here. Okay, so what we have is a five mile river running uh north to south, top of the page to the bottom. And it's about um three hundred and sixty feet long as it runs through this property. And then as you move to the east, you're gonna come across the wetland, the fringe wetland limit. And then we also have the FEMA line, uh, the flood line, which is, for the most part, a combination or 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 the same as the floodway and the floodplain reach. And then towards the middle, it bows out a little bit more with the floodplain, with the floodway being just inside the wetlands. Then it continues a little bit, very modest grade until it reaches, oh, about a hundred feet out or so. And then that's kind of where we decided to start this development. We wanted to be out of the floodplain, we wanted to be as far away from the wetlands as we could. And then the grade starts to rise up. So as we get to the next sheet, this, this is how we started. We started with the two duplexes on the westerly side with the grade that rises up towards Richards Avenue at less than seven percent, believe it or not. Uh, it lent itself very well to make these walkouts. Limited the amount of work we had to be doing behind the units, as Matt said. And then um the other trick, not not trick, but the other um desire or goal that they put on us was, look, we want this to be as accessible as can be. So we had to minimize steps, uh, four inch or three inch into the buildings, very little uh step from the garage into the house. And and that's a little bit difficult, you know, that that's a good challenge. So that's how these units are designed. So you basically take a small step into the house from either your garage or the front door. As we move our way up, we've got a nice driveway, uh, common driveway here. And this is only about five percent or so, so it's a very mild driveway. As it comes down from Richards Avenue, we've um put in some catch spaces, of course, to pick up that runoff. And then to take care of that runoff, as Matt said, we've got these placed underneath the asphalt and not behind the units. And so this doesn't take up any of the green space, which lets him do a lot more landscaping than some of the other projects we we have to work on. So you can see now the, the westerly line of these buildings is that land, a line of the sand, and then all of our development is to the east. Uh, these are three separate arrays of infiltrators, so that way they'll act independently. And then as Matt said too, we don't have any sort of uh what we call a concentrated point source discharge. We come out with three level spreaders, one to the north, one in the middle, and then one to the south. You'll see these other little uh nodes here, those are just footing drains. And doing the test pits here, we we have very gravelly soil, the same as the project to the south. So in designing these, these, these systems are designed without the uh the number of infiltration. We're we're not allowed to take into account infiltration. So in that respect, they are well sized. And although theoretically, our report may say we have a retained and detained dis- or, excuse me, a detained discharge of of stormwater, for many, many of the storms, we just feed the infiltration. And that's good too, because the infiltration then leads to a base flood for the river and it keeps everything nicely hydrated. Uh, and that, we're we're coming in from Richards Avenue, Richards Avenue is a, is a main thoroughfare. It has all the utilities, we have gas, we have water. The sewer was extended up to the uh southerly end of our property, so we have that to tie into. Although these uh buildings are dropping down towards the river, uh, each building will have its own separate little pump station. That will then pump up to a common, through a common force main and discharge into the sanitary sewer line, which then heads south towards uh Connecticut Avenue. A little bit of wallwork, not much at all, uh, obviously on the south side where we transitioned from the larger development. But as we go along the north side, we just have a kind of a fairly low profile wall on that north side, just so we can, again, try to create those level areas that we didn't want any sort of severe droppings. And finally, um, going back to the elder page and see a little bit better. Uh, each unit has a one car garage with ample room to park in front of each garage. And then we've also provided that guest parking for maybe family members or workers or things like that. So uh comfortable as it can be. Uh, last thing is emergency vehicle is always a big issue. And we designed this with a nice flat re- radiuses at the end, so a fire truck can come down, make the turn, hammerhead it back and go straight back out to Richards Avenue, so there's no backing of those emergency vehicles. Uh, engineering comments have been addressed. Uh, part of that was to show more detail on the sanitary sewer connection, which we did. Sidewalks, they asked for a a new sidewalk, it's going to be provided. And um, other than that, we are now in the process of monitoring the sanitary sewer. And the reason that's being done is we are just at that threshold where they say ten units or more. And the reason that's being done is we are just at that threshold where they say 10 units or more. We would like you to monitor the manhole that we decide to make sure that there's plenty of capacity in the receiving line. Now that receiving line is the one on Richards Avenue. They're not concerned about the line on Connecticut Avenue. That's a trunk line. From our inspections, we know there's ample capacity and having worked in other projects, but as a formality, that monitoring has begun and will be over in a few weeks. And other than that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. DeAndrea, can you show with your cursor where the conservation line would be behind the last two units?
Yes, uh, let me bring up a different screen. I think it's better shown on this one. Let's see. This one. There you go. Okay, now this is the, you can all see as I hope this is the zoning location survey we prepared. And I will enlarge this a bit for you as well. So if you can see that grainy hashing in here, this, this is the set aside, let's call it open space. And that shaded like that is 27,780 square feet. But you can see that meets the requirement and there's a lot more area even in between. So we're far exceeding that requirement. The other nice thing about this is it's not, you know, the river is not here like Richards Avenue. This spreads out and this wedge, this key shape. And so we have a beautiful river corridor along the westerly side that's going to stay that way. No disturbance at all in that area.
Could you just-
Is there a park area or anything around near the riverbed where people can like sit or, you know, like a recreational space there?
I defer back to Matt on that question.
Can I just go back to Mr. DeAndrea again? Can you, can you just explain the significance of the, of the bulge out that's on the outside of the conservation area?
Is that right here?
Yes.
Yes. I'll start here in the southerly end. So we actually modeled this river years ago when we were working on Mallard's Landing. And we had found, and also I should say too, we also had done a topographic survey of the almost six acres that was owned by the Nemeth family before they sold it off to Jerry and his group. So we have a history with this river and we recognize that it wasn't modeled properly. So we did a Lomar with a full backwater analysis. This is years ago. I, I think we're going back to the early eighties when we did Mallard's Landing. And what happens as we come along from now on this property in the southerly end, the floodway and the floodplain are the same, the same limit. And then as you get towards the upper third of this property where it, where it levels out, a little greater leveling out from the river, the floodplain moves away from the floodway and that's what this bulge is. And then, then it comes back and joins again with it and that has to do with the topography. Typically you'll see the floodway on its own and then quite often the floodplain farther out. In this case, because of the, of the grade of the property in the southerly end and then back again on the northerly end, they are in unison. Only here does it bulge out a bit. But again, that was it. We did not want to have to go through that exercise of demonstrating that these units wouldn't have an appreciable rise in the river. So it worked out to just design this project. So everything is clear of the floodplain and floodway.
I just remembered that picture of the line and I just wanted to know what the significance of the bulge out was. Mr. Chairman, would it be permitted for me to ask Attorney LeBlanc a question now that, that, or Attorney Blank that goes along with what I'm talking about with the engineer?
Absolutely.
Attorney Blank, you had indicated that you would really like it if we didn't ask you to go back for a conservation easement. But rather to utilize what it is that you're proposing here. Would this be an easement that would allow for no development or no encroachment in your conservation area?
Yes, and, and as far as we're concerned, the restrictions and limitations on, on the use would be identical. The, the, the differences between the easement and the area for us, one was, was it, was it just simply a timing issue? And, and but, but again, if you want the easement, as long as you allow it to be granted at, at the time of certificate of occupancy, rather than the zoning permit, we'll, we'll, we'll get the easement. We know, we'll go through that process. But the, the, the other difference, I think, between the easement and the conservation area, which I kind of like, is that a conservation area, as we've shown, let's just say that in the future, we are able to acquire the parcel behind us, which is something that, that the clients have looked at, have not yet been able to do. But they've looked at that. We could come back in front of you with a special permit application, which again, you can deny. You don't, you know, you don't have to approve, but we'd come, if we came back, we could actually contour the conservation area differently, still meeting the 25%. And you guys would have to, and ladies would have to decide, is that something that you would like or not? And you could approve or deny it. Once the easement's given as a conservation easement, it's a much more complicated process to try to undo that or to change its direction. Additionally, I mean, there is a little difference, which would be that if 100 years from now, this site was going to be redeveloped again for some other use. At that point in time, again, whoever was on the zoning commission at that time could consider an application to change how the property was laid out. The commission would have to agree and approve it, but there'd be some flexibility with that. The easement would, would make that more challenging.
I, I understand, I understand that, but what I was really getting at was if you were considering this to be a conservation area, how would that be delineated in terms of our approval of this or your filings on the land record? What would you propose to do to delineate that as the conservation area?
I think we were proposing to simply list it as a conservation area as it's shown currently on the plans. With, with no more demarcation than that and the, the zoning permit itself, which would also indicate that that was a conservation area.
Excuse me, but I have one question. Much of that conservation area can't be built on in any of that, can it? Because it's wetlands and it's the river. So most of that is would have to be set aside and not built on, no matter how the property was used. Is that correct?
Well, I think as a legal matter, no. As a practical matter, probably, right? So there, there's no prohibition on build, absolute prohibition on building on a wetlands or in, in a wetlands review area. Obviously, if it can be avoided, that's preferred.
The next question would be whether you would get a permit or not, and I think we know the answer to that. But I'm, I'm not trying to like beat a dead horse here, but I'm just trying to understand what it is that you're proposing to do. I know the timing issue, but let's put that aside for a moment. If this was designated as a conservation area as opposed to a conservation easement, would that not allow you the ability to clean up dead trees and allow your residents to walk around and enjoy the river and that kind of thing?
I, 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 the residents would be allowed to, to walk through the area like passive walking. There wouldn't be actual walking trails. But, but yes, walking through would be, would be permissible.
But unlike some of the areas in Norwalk, if there was a tree that fell down and was hanging over where people walk, you could go in and clean it up if you wanted, which might be a problem with a conservation easement.
Depending on how it was drafted, yep.
Could, could I make a comment on that if you, if I may? Because to your point, if trees come down, they would be within a regulated area, to your point before, that most of it is already within a wetland strip, at least of the two thirds of it. Typically what happens there is you go to the Wetlands Conservation Commission, point out what you want to remove. And oftentimes they would like that tree to remain anyway. It's when it may fall across the river and block it. But you still would need to go into the Conservation Commission and ask for permission to go into that regulated area to clean it out.
If there was an easement?
Same thing. We, we deal with a lot of conservation easements, especially in Stanford. And there's language in there that says what you can and can't do. And, and all that language also says on my own property, so I know from experience, that if there's a need to take out trees or clean or remove, you still have to have it approved by at least staff of in Stanford, the, the Wetlands Agency. Same thing would be in Norwalk.
Mr. Chairman, if, if you recall, we had the Willard Road application, which I believe Attorney Blank was counsel for. And, and there was sizable conservation easement placed on that property. And I think the language that we worked with and at least on the other end was trying to be as flexible as possible to handle situations where there were dead trees and invasive plants that wanted to be removed. So I think, I think it's something that if there were items that needed to be removed at, at some point, that that would probably be more handled on the staff level, I would think.
You have the, the 10 Willard, it was kind of funny, at the conservation level, there was this sort of push and pull between, we don't want you to touch the land. So if something falls, you know, leave it. It's good for the bugs and the frogs and stuff. And, and, and on the other hand, if, if something falls, we, the city, don't want to have to be responsible for cleaning it up. And so we, we, we ended up in that easement, having a fair amount of responsibility to maintain and clean up the conservation area as necessary.
That's what I was hoping you would agree to here.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sure that the clients would, would agree to that. I don't think it's good for their, for their product if, if it's unsightly. So we, we don't have any objection to that. And we don't have any objection to if you'd like if you don't, if we do a conservation easement and it's done at, at the end of the process, great. If we do a conservation area, I, I don't have an objection to that conservation area being subject to agreeing to some specific language with staff after the fact. That would be similar to what you'd see in an easement.
And similar to Willard Road?
Yes. I, I mean, Willard Road had similarly was, was the conservation area was wetlands and, and the wetland review area and some other portions. On that one, there was, there was in fact a recreation area, I believe that was within the conservation easement, if I'm not mistaken, which we're not proposing.
Staff's preference would be for a conservation easement handled by the conservation staff. But we have, I have no objection if it happens before the CEO. I, I think that's fine.
And the one other thing that I'll just mention, and again, our, if you did require an easement, we would go through conservation and we would hope that they would give it to us. But I, I, I do think that the, the approval language should just say conservation easement, not from the Conservation Commission. For two reasons. One, the practical is that it's discretionary on the Conservation Commission, whether or not they want to accept any conservation easement. They can't be mandated to, no matter what the terms are. And number two, and that's why, you know, the White Barn property, the land trust has the conservation easement on that property. I, I don't believe it's even lawful to, to, for the city to say that you have to give an easement or you have to give land to the city in exchange for your development. It's certainly permissible to say you have to have a conservation easement, but it's always been my experience that it's up to the applicant to determine who they're going to give that conservation easement to. Again, it's our, it's our expectation that we would go through conservation, but in the unlikely event that they said, we don't want the headache. You keep it. We don't want to be out of compliance with zoning.
Okay, we have an outstanding question didn't get answered because of this discussion. And that was whether there are going to be site amenities on the property for residents, whether that's benches or any other type of amenity.
Thank you, Louis.
Sure. Leonard, Jerry?
Hello, yes. We're not proposing any specific areas per se, but our, our contemplation is that we would have little rock areas or little rock benches, something that's very natural and something that is low maintenance. So that there would be natural areas with large boulders or stones, et cetera, like that, where people could, you know, walk easily from their unit, sit down and enjoy a little bit of nature. So it would be very limited. We're not foreseeing any, you know, you know, playgrounds or any pagodas or any type of structures. We want it to be very minimal and very associated with each unit, a little private area where they can go out and enjoy the outside.
No, I would, I would think that that would enhance the property and, and your ability to market it. And maybe we, when we get there, maybe we ought to consider putting in some language to that effect. That, that, that doesn't overly constrain or put unreasonable, unreasonable demands on you.
Okay.
Do we, do we have other questions? Anything else from Attorney Blank?
No, sir.
Then let's open it up to the public. Do we have anyone who wants to comment on the project?
Say please raise your hand or press star nine if you dialed in and would like to speak.
Maybe they'll comment on the irony that this whole house is filming a brand new construction.
Not seeing anyone.
Nothing.
We're hoping to get some guinea pigs for our, turn on our video experiment.
All right. Are there any final questions then from the commission members?
Actually, I have one question for Dave. Are you seeing the, the homes being mostly the duplex model? Are you seeing people going into fourplexes or bigger sort of more families into those sort of standalone units?
As of the senior population?
For the senior pop, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think th- this is all materializing now. I mean, there was a big, there was, there's been a big push on the congregant living over the last five years. I mean, as the, the property of the South is evidence of that. And just recently, I mean, I know there's some similar projects that have popped up in, in New Jersey and Westchester County. I think we're going to see a range of, of options though. So I mean, single duplex, maybe a fourplex. There's definitely been a preference just in the general apartment market, at least as we sit now for properties that have a private entrance versus where you enter into a common area and then, you know, you have your access from there. So I, I think that's really the one design characteristic that seems to be, you know, just more recently being preferred is that private entrance. And whether it's two units or three units or four units, I don't think that's really completely borne out yet.
Oh, thank you.
Anything else before we close the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I just had one point to make that the Attorney Blank had pointed this out earlier, that the Fulton Drive property was not included in the information I provided you. That the tax assessor, actually their, their database has that mislabeled as a B2, B2 zone, when it's actually in the B zone. So that property would also fit into that as Attorney Blank indicate. I can pull up an aerial picture of that if you're interested to see it, but it's kind of interesting in that general neighborhood. I think this was the result of previous allowed developments in there, even though it is B zone, it's more or less all multi-family development on, you know, large lots. I think it was part of the old PRD regulations, but it's much different development pattern than you see in many other places.
Do we have commission members who would like to see that? I mean, it's not strictly related to this application. It's only peripherally related.
No takers? That's fine.
Okay. If, if not, we'll, we'll close the hearing. And we'll move on to review and action on pending application.
I'll, I'll say so. And, you know, we've been hearing this for a while and I got to tell you, I, I kind of like this project.
Frank, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to stop you for, for, for just a minute because again, we have a housekeeping. because, again, we have a housekeeping issue that we need to address. And that is that I can only allow one alternate to move forward as we discuss and act on this matter. So what I'm going to propose is that for this matter, Frank, you'll participate. Nick, you will not be permitted to participate any further in discussion and voting on this matter. But on the next matter, we'll reverse it. Nick will be involved in the discussion and vote, and Frank, you won't be able to. And then, and again, I think we have a third matter and we'll flip it once again.
Whatever it takes, Lou.
So let's move into 2021-02 CAM. Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. Action on 3A, that is 2021-01, r/sp rap 2 LLC, the project that was just presented. Frank, you have some comments you wanted to make.
I was just going to say, I'm in favor of this project and I wish it was more like this in Norwalk. I think we do have an aging population. This is a great solution for that. I think it puts a bright star on Norwalk where it welcomes people who are not going to be as taxing to our community as, take it from me, a single dad with five kids filling up the education system and everything else where the elderly don't have that. I think I'm a huge supporter and I hope, from a personal level, I see more types of developments like this come through.
Steve, can you pull up the comments of the planning commission? I know it's a little late to get them into the record, but...
Brian, are you able to do that quicker than me?
We'll find out.
And just while Brian's doing that, just a housekeeping matter. There are two applications that you're voting on. One is the actual amendment to the regulation, so you had two resolutions. And the second is a special permit. So I think you need to take each one, vote on, obviously, the text amendment first, and we should look at the language again. And once that's decided, then take action on the special permit application.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, while we're waiting, I had a question about, I mean, obviously, I know Adam and the developer had agreed to the amendments, the conditions that were discussed in the staff memo. But I'm wondering if there are other applications or other projects that end up falling within this category, whether this needs to be handed on a case-by-case basis or whether this can get standardized. You know, these amendments, if it's a regulatory amendment or if it's something that needs to be passed, I think I'm wondering if there can be a little further discussion on whether we can standardize some of these conditions.
I just pulled up the text amendment portion of it, so if you...
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, okay. So I had put in my memo I sent out the other day. I kind of think that number two is a little bit of a moot point. I don't think we need to include that. When we were first looking at this, I was just thinking of and trying always to be on the conservative side of things with this, is looking at some belts and suspenders approaches. And I think number two was in response to that. But after looking at the map, spending a lot of time, you know, looking at the potential parcels, my recommendation would be not to include that. The bulk of, like, if you look at one and two, I mean, you could always go back, like, for instance, on number one, you could, at a later date, you could always go back and loosen up that area restriction. If this was something that you wanted to see expand to other areas of the city, you could drop that acreage requirement down to whatever you felt was appropriate. The density is in line with what's in the existing B-zone. So I think that that makes sense, because you're not, you know, to speak to some critics, you're not expanding any additional housing than they already could realize. You're just facilitating a more condensed and cohesive development pattern. And that's reflective of items six through eight, which are speaking to some of the POCD recommendations about conservation measures, sustainability measures and so forth. But I mean, I'm happy to address if you had other items or one, two...
No, I mean, I agree, and those were what my heightened focus was on. And I agree with you in zeroing out the second condition, the highlighted condition, that started, the subject property shall be located within .25 miles. I agree with zeroing that out.
I do, too.
Steve, on item number six, do you want to change that to conservation easement?
That would be my recommendation, that I think that's just a, provides a little bit more protection for the city in longer term, because, you know, if there are parcels to the north or south, you never know what's going to happen in the future. We can always add to that, and then maybe it's the beginning of a little greenway or something. Who knows, if we're thinking long-term.
And do you... If we're just saying easement, who's granting the easement onto whom?
I think the easement would be in favor of the city. Unless we had another entity that wasn't, that was willing to do that, like if there was a land trust or something like that.
Okay.
Here in the zoning regulations, though, if we have conservation area, we could always require an easement in specific cases, if it's appropriate. There may be cases where there's a conservation area that wouldn't be as appropriate for an easement.
Galen, I don't disagree with you, but I think we ought to, we ought to have the language as tight as possible. So that I would favor easement. And if at some point in the future, again, we wanted to ease that off, we might be able to change it to area. I'm more comfortable going in that direction than going in the other direction.
What about... Do require the easement, we would require it when they get their certificate of occupancy, so they can proceed immediately. Is that correct?
Yes, I think, I think the staff is satisfied with that language.
I just did some quick edits to six, if you can see that. I don't know if that...
Yeah, we can see.
For the attorneys in the audience, excluding Mr. Blank, if that is something that makes sense on your end.
The only thing that's not there, Steve, that Attorney Blank was looking for, is the timing.
Yeah, and that would be in the conditions of the special permit. And we'll have to adjust that one after you vote on this one.
That, okay.
So should I remove number two?
I think those who spoke were all in favor of eliminating it.
Okay.
So Steve, one of the attorneys wants to know, how come you have must on one part and may in the other part in paragraph five?
Man, those damn attorneys.
Because if you ever saw my undergraduate transcripts, you would know that I was not always paying attention in class. So I'm happy to switch it to whoever you think is best.
No, well, I think actually, the way the order is actually lends itself to what Galen was saying. I actually think that that, leaving it open like that may not be a bad idea.
But who makes that decision? I'm not in favor of it having to go to conservation again. I think an easement area designation, I mean, a conservation area designation is fine. I just don't understand, which may be in the form of an easement in favor of the city. That's a conservation easement, then.
I think what that could do is allow you to, on an application-by-application basis, decide whether you want an easement or not want an easement. They have to conserve 25% of the land. Whether it's in the form of an easement is up to you at the time of approval of an application.
Yep, I think that makes sense.
I agree.
I agree with that, if that's what that says.
I think that is what that says.
Well, if you were going to appeal me, Mr. Rowena, would you agree or not?
Richard, what's your objection to sending them back to the Conservation Commission?
Because I like to walk my dog, and there are some areas that I take a deep breath and say a prayer and run under a tree and hope it's not going to fall on me. And I just, I just think that some of the, and I believe in the Conservation Commission and I believe in wetlands, don't get me wrong, this isn't the Republican way of looking at anything. I just feel like there should be an opportunity to clean up dead trees and like on my favorite trail that I take my dog on, if a giant tree is hanging over a fork in a living tree that I walk under, you know, I just think that somebody should have the ability to fix that.
Why the hell do you walk under that tree?
Say again.
Why the hell do you walk under that tree?
I know, my dog likes it there so much, I can't help it. I run now and I'm not that good a runner. But I'm okay with this language, if that's what it means, that we have some input in it. I'm okay with it.
Okay, and is the staff comfortable with it?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay, I would like to see some language, it doesn't necessarily have to be here. It could be something that the staff works out with the developer regarding some amenities for the residents.
Sure, when we, I think the best course maybe is, if Brian, if, hopefully I stalled enough for you to have found the Planning Commission resolution, but read that into the record, then we can vote on the resolution for the amendment and then discuss the special permit portion of it.
Okay, okay. Is there a motion to approve the amendment as it's been rewritten?
It moved.
Josh moved it, is there a second?
Frank, second.
All right, Frank, seconds. Let's do a roll call vote on this.
And I just pulled up the Planning Commission recommendations, so you have it.
And Louis, when you said as rewritten, we're talking about those changes of striking out that second condition and the language we just discussed.
Okay, exactly.
Okay.
Should we look at the Planning Commission resolution first, or...
Yeah, probably a good idea, just to make sure that's, it does, not a shocker here, it does mimic the resolution supporting language.
Steve, can you make that just a bit larger?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, and what we're looking at is the comments of the Planning Commission at their January 13th, 2021 meeting.
Let me know when you're all set and I'll take that off the screen.
Yep.
Good.
Okay. All right. Roll call?
Sure.
This is to approve the amendment?
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Mancini?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
So you name the seven, zero.
Okay, the second item is a special permit. Is there, all right, there we go. This is a draft resolution for the special permit.
I think we all agreed, didn't we, that the conservation easement would be issued prior to the certificate of occupancy, not the issuance of zoning permits?
That's correct.
Can we fix that?
And now it's been fixed.
Perfect. I think that's good as it is.
Well, no, the language of B needs to change, does it not, to reflect the changes we made in the previous six?
Yeah, he just did that.
No, but that means we're saying that they have to get a conservation...
Exactly. And I thought we, I thought we agreed that wasn't the case.
You got me confused.
Well, that was the must and the may.
No, I agree.
Yeah, I think we agreed that we wanted them to get a conservation easement, right? After all the discussion?
I thought not.
Oh, it was may, get a conservation easement.
Yeah, so the zoning text will read may. So on an individual application, you have the discretion to require the easement or not require the easement?
Okay, okay.
So in this app, yeah, you got... This is the case-by-case version, that was the text amendment that gives us the power to do a case-by-case, okay.
Right, we were all saying, I don't think we necessarily need an easement, but I thought the most people were in favor of an easement when we were discussing it. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I'm in favor of the creation of a conservation area with conditions that can be agreed upon with staff, or we can say what they are right now. But conditions as to what happens in that, what happens and what doesn't happen in the conservation area.
Makes sense to me, then they don't have to file an easement.
So are we going to change the language to what we had in the previous, in the resolution?
No, so that language doesn't need to change, it's just a question of whether, I mean, if you did not want to require the easement, then I would say just remove condition B.
No, I think we should have it in there that a conservation area...
Okay.
A conservation area be delineated, which they have done.
Well, let's get some feedback from the other commission members, since there seems to be some disagreement on this. Is, are we, are our commission members supporting the, for this particular project, the conservation area or the conservation easement? Now, Richard clearly is favoring the area. What is the feeling of the rest of the commission?
I favor the area, and then we could put in there that there will be some amenities, such as benches, provided for residents.
Okay.
Which would be Louis's point.
I support an area as well, and I thought we may can say they can seek an easement if they like.
Well, why do that? You know, they don't want to do an easement.
Yeah, but I mean, if they want to, I thought we would like, they may.
Someone wants an easement. Listen, I agree for the area, the fact that if there's dead trees where someone could possibly risk a life or an animal or a pet, we need to discard that tree immediately. And we should have the zoning for that, that they must maintain that area. But we don't need anything more than that, and it should be a case-by-case basis.
Okay, other commission members?
I'm okay with an area.
Okay.
I agree with Rod and everyone else here.
Okay, then the language is area.
I'm just, what I would recommend, as I'm typing here, so they've already required to file a Mylar of the site plan, so that site plan should include the conservation area, so that way it's filed on the land records.
That's fine.
And then we should just agree on the language for what you want to see in the conservation area or how they want to... agree on the language for what you want to see in the conservation area or how they want to um and any work you want done or how, how it's managed or seating areas you were just discussing.
I guess it's kind of a, a cross jurisdictional thing, so to speak. Um, I would be in favor of having the area delineated and, you know, kept maintained and and as a passive recreation area for the residents, but I don't know if.
That's good. I would too.
Yeah.
I don't know if I'm a senior or an elder yet, but if I was living there, I'd love to sit down by that river.
Spelling of residents, Steve. There we go.
How's that?
That's
That's good.
It looks good.
That looks good.
And the language regarding, regarding amenities to be worked out between um uh staff and the developer?
Yep.
Yes.
That's a passive recreation, are the amenities.
No, I'm not sure it is. I think uh the passive recreation simply suggests that they can walk in the uh conservation area. There we go.
I see.
That looks good.
Yep, that's okay. Um, is there anything below H?
Yes. Not much, but just, I think more standard boilerplate kind of stuff.
So. So Kay should probably say. Area?
Steve?
Sorry.
Kay should probably say within the conservation area and/or easement.
Yeah, I'll leave it at area.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on this?
I think so.
Yes.
Can I have a, a motion uh to either approve or disapprove?
I move to approve.
Okay, Richard moves to approve. Michael seconds. Again, let's uh, let's do a roll call on this.
Okay, Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Mancini?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Seven, zero unanimous.
Okay. Next, uh, next item and for this one, um uh Frank?
I'm gonna sit out on this one, Coach. I, I got, I got the bench on this one.
Okay, and Nick? You have uh full, full rights on this one. Um, twenty twenty-one dash oh two, Cam Hillcrest Partners LLC, one forty-three Row 8th Avenue. Four-unit residential building, uh, report and recommended action. And this is a um sightland, uh, sight, sight plan review. I would invite uh the developers uh to uh come on board and um make their presentation.
Hey, Bill, turn his camera on.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jay Klein from uh Carmody Law. I'm just gonna call Bill and, and make sure he's uh having any technical issues. Thank you, folks. Can you hear and see me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, and I apologize for that. My uh, my mouse got disconnected, so though I look cool and collected here, I was scrambling under my desk. But I'm back. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm here on behalf of the applicant Hillcrest Partners and two of the folks uh involved with Hillcrest, Charlie Eaton and Rob Haskell. And uh, we are here in furtherance of the site plan approval, coastal site plan approval for one forty-three uh Row 8th Avenue to redevelopment of the site. We were here in uh, on January seventh, we gave you a presentation of the site plan. I know uh, your staff has prepared a detailed memo uh that I'll take advice from you, but uh, i- if uh, it's okay with you, I think the best way to proceed sir would be to uh, me to give you a, a reminder of, of the project, not very where it is, what's there now, what's proposed, uh, and uh, what we believe to be the advantages of the redevelopment. And uh, then explain to you what's happened since January seventh in terms of our visit to the Five Mile River Commission, uh, receipt of a peer review study, uh, discussions with neighbors to the north and more recently uh to the south, uh, and then take questions from you. That make sense to you?
That sounds fine.
Perfect, perfect. So let, let me just begin by introducing my fellow consultant team members, which include uh West Out, a landscape architect, Colin Growth here from uh, uh, Beinfield Associates who's designed the building, uh, and Jim Cacidis, who's uh been the uh civil engineer on the project and of course, uh, my colleague, Jason Klein. So uh, Jason, perhaps you can put up the uh, the PowerPoint we have and we could run through that quickly for the commission's benefit. So, get to the uh overhead of the uh site. There we go. You can make that a tad bigger. I think we can all focus on it better. All right, there's the site there. It's a, almost a square, a little bit of a rectangle, very regular site. Sixteen thousand one square feet in size, uh, and Jason will run his cursor over uh, what is uh, the, on the site right now. There are two buildings. A little over five thousand square feet total floor area, uh, both of them used as uh commercial office buildings. The uh balance of the site is almost completely devoted to uh asphalt parking, twenty-two spaces. The site has ninety-six percent uh pervious surface uh at the moment. So almost completely paved. It's in the middle of Row 8th Village, as you know, the, the north is the Sixth Taxing District uh Art Center Building and to the south is uh an office building, commercial office building, uh, vintage uh, the fifties or sixties, I would guess. Uh, and uh similarly developed uh, is a very non-porous uh uh site, uh, across the street from the um fire station, uh, really the post office, fire station's just a bit down the road, right across from the uh hardware store and the other prominent feature, of course, is it's on the Five Mile River uh, with Bulkhead and some uh boat slips. Nothing is proposed with respect to moving or uh, diminishing in any way the boat slips or the uh Bulkhead. They will remain part of this project. Um, the uh, the intention is to completely redevelop the uh site. And uh, Jason, maybe we can go to uh uh, an image that shows that, that's what's there now and you, and you can see both of these properties are completely uh impervious. Go to the next one, Jason. Yeah, so the redevelopment will include removal of the two buildings and construction of a new building, which will uh also convert the use of the property from commercial office to residential. The building you're looking at, which uh Colin and his colleagues designed is a four uh unit, multifamily uh unit building uh contemplated as condominiums, three, three bedrooms and one four bedroom. They're positioned on a podium, uh, the, the lower level of which is uh parking tense parking spaces uh below that building you're looking at. And then there's three more spaces in the uh, in the uh drive aisle that are uh parallel, that probably function more or less as visitor parking, but uh this property in terms of zoning, it's over park. It's designed and contemplated to be uh conforming to, and I will tell you is one hundred percent conforming to the Row 8th River District, uh, Row 8th Village District uh regulations. Uh, and uh, that requires site plan approval and that, that's why we're here. The um uh, site now has really no uh, uh, site drainage uh, uh, in any modern sense, well, waterfalls from the sky or somehow winds up on the pavement and sheet flows into the river without being treated. Uh, that will all be uh rectified. The areas now that uh rainwater hits uh such as roofs or the pavement uh will be subject to a collection system that eventually routes the water uh into a uh, an area beneath the flat part of the drive at the river end of the site and essentially acts as a large dry well to accept the water, cool the water and then slowly release it over time. Uh, and uh, that is of course a dramatic improvement uh, in terms of uh, the water quality as it leaves the site and uh brings us into conformity with the Coastal Area Management Act, of course. The conversion of the property uh from commercial office to residential also is, is detailed in our traffic letter. Uh, uh, results in a substantial reduction in peak hour traffic on the road uh, to the extent that I think it's reduced by well over sixty percent at, at, at peak hours. Um, another feature of this site uh is the landscaping. Wes will walk you through the landscaping. At the moment, there's very little, it's very sparse. Uh, when it is uh completed, it's going to be a very rich uh look, both in terms of the architecture and the landscaping. Uh, and uh, in addition to that, on the north end of the site, um, maybe we can walk through there, Jason. We have any image? And it might just be the site plan. That's a view from the water. Yeah, that, this is a good image. Um, you'll see now that uh, the area between the uh, the northern property line and the uh building, which Jason will run his cursor through, is uh, it, to be approved with a walkway which will uh serve two functions. Number one, it's the second egress for the upstairs units, they'll both have stairways down there. And it's also a, a public access way from Row 8th Avenue through to the uh boardwalk at the uh river edge of the park of the project. Uh, and there's a little pergola structure there that uh is intended to be uh, probably the destination. So if you're walking down the street and you just feel like taking a quick walk and seeing the river, which is really a spectacular point, uh, you'll be able to do so. Um, Wes will explain this in more detail in a second, but we've had discussions since we were here uh on January seventh with our neighbor to the north, the Sixth Taxing District. Um, it's, it's a uh, a space that is, I would say, now neglected uh through uh Bruce uh Beinfield and Wes's uh offices. Uh, we uh reached out to the taxing district, had a discussion uh about ways to improve our, our site but also their, their side of the line too, so that it looks and functions as, as one and it's attractive and you don't get the sense that there is a property line in the middle of it all. And all those efforts have resulted in a, a letter of support that's in your file from the Sixth Taxing District. So we're very happy and proud that we were able to achieve that. Very appreciative of their efforts as well. Um, the other uh thing that I, I will just share with you is very, very recently uh, we had conversations with our property owner to the south. Uh, there's a small retaining wall. It's not a very big thing, but it's important to them. Uh, and it's always been our uh, uh, intention to, to maintain that because we know it must be important to them. Uh, and they've asked us to make sure that when we are in our process of construction, that before we actually uh, put our landscaping up against that wall, that we uh take care to uh, you know, seal the wall and parch it if necessary so that it, it remains um uh, in good condition. They are uh, justifiably worried that once our landscaping is in and once we, we don't really see the wall because so much landscaping is going in, it'll be easy for us to forget that. So we're happy to do that. It's actually a, a good idea and helps us as well. They've also asked that we uh give some consideration to uh maybe a different treatment to the uh fence at the end. Wes can talk about where his picket fence is at the end of that mutual property line. Um, their concern there is very simply, it's beautiful fence he's got designed, but at some point the landscaping will be mature and they, we won't see the fence, only they will. And uh, maybe there's a different treatment, different fence, different type of we're happy to have that discussion with them post approval and they, they've said that's perfectly acceptable. So uh, this might be a good time, uh, Mr. Chairman, for me to ask um, uh Colin, uh Growth here to explain to you what was in the uh, 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 BFJ uh peer review uh letter uh, and the, the uh discussions that that uh, uh created between the Beinfield Firm and uh BFJ and where, where they uh resolved issues. And uh, in, in my experience, this is one of the, the, the the easiest peer review uh, review uh, uh, discussions that I've had. So Colin, can you uh, uh, take over now and just walk people through the few uh comments and changes that were made?
Uh, sure, thanks, Bill. Um, Commissioners, uh, thank you for having us and uh hearing the application again. Uh, pleasure to be back again, bringing you a new, a new project. Um Bill mentioned we, we went through the peer review process with BFJ and um had several uh comments. I don't think any of them were really uh hard for us to deal with. Um, the main can, I, I can go through the bullet points quick, but the uh, the design uh needed to be compatible with the surrounding area. We feel that um, starting off with the traditional work that we've done uh with coastal New England forums that are um common in Row 8th, uh, the building was already there, so we felt like we accomplished that. Um, it's a simple, organized and traditional facade, so, so we, we didn't really have a lot of disagreement on that point. The uh BFJ took a little bit of issue with the dormer overhangs. Uh, they felt like they were a little excessive, so we, we pulled those back to be a little bit more in keeping with uh some of the dormer, the other dormer overhangs we've done in Row 8th, uh notably uh sixty-five Row 8th Avenue has a, has a very sleek type dormer. Um, so we, we felt okay pulling that back and, and keeping that traditional look. They had some comments uh about the, the basement and the number of flood vents in some of the areas. Um, we addressed that and added flood vents in the basement so that, uh, or additional flood vents so that there was an equal amount of venting through the spaces that they were um concerned with and we will uh continue to just revise the uh the flood plan as necessary as we, um, the flood vent plan as necessary as we go through uh construction documents as this project proceeds and address FEMA uh as necessary. Um, there's a question about the trash in the storage room. Um, we've made that as large as we feel is necessary. Uh, and the fill area is, is just um to maintain the grade in that area. Point number five on the first floor. Uh, they were concerned about the design of the public walkway on the northern and western side of the building. They were concerned that there was public access up to, uh, Jake, can you go back to the site plan? Yeah, there's a uh, if you can see on the backside of the property towards the public access and the south there's two, there's a terrace and a balcony. Yep, those. So at the bottom of the stairs that go down to the public access, they were concerned that those stairs did not have a gate. Um, and that somebody from the public could just walk up those stairs and be hanging out on somebody's patio, so they asked that we added a gate there which we did. Uh, so that creates a little bit more of a buffer.
So that creates a little bit more of a buffer, much similar to what's going on on the walkway, where there's gates into those entry stairs to the units. Third floor, they said that we were showing mechanical equipment. They were wondering what that was. At the moment, we're showing that as a rooftop condenser location. Jay, that would be a roof plan if you want to go there. Yep, right there. Back up. Yeah, so the area in between the two, yep, right there. So we labeled that in the most recent set of plans as rooftop mechanical equipment. So those are the outdoor units for the HVAC equipment. So they'll be concealed from view behind the parapet walls of the pitch grooves and serviceable through that access through the unfinished attic area. Concern about the street-facing units, garden patio that Wes has designed, and they were wondering if we needed a guardrail. If you can flip back a few, Jay, to the first floor plan. Actually, Wes's plan would probably be best. Yeah, so along the front, where there's the street trees and a little bit of lawn before the landscape wall that is believed being thought of as a traditional river rock treatment with a stone cap by Wes. He can correct me if I'm misspeaking there. He's got a landscaped buffer on the inside, and the code does not require a guardrail if you have a two-foot landscape buffer with some decent shrubs along the edge there. And it's also not a very high landscape wall, so that keeps it very neighborhood scale and doesn't put a large barrier for pedestrians. And also, the plantings and the height of the wall give a good sense of separation and security for the lawn users that are going to be in that, living in that unit. So that's a positive. We felt that that was an overall positive, not putting up a high fence along the street, softening it with plantings. The eastern facade, he had a comment about the glass windows and felt like the glass was not necessarily in keeping with that. Jay, if you could go to the west, yeah, that elevation. So the concept we had originally pitched is a maybe a more industrial building, but we went back and we looked at our references, and it's much more in keeping with the traditional coastal seaside or riverside porches of large or residential buildings. You had these deep porches that may have existed in the past and then would have been enclosed in more modern times to provide better weather protection and year-round enjoyment. So we feel that it's designed in such a way that it mimics that and kind of speaks to that heritage of the waterfront communities that we all know and love and are a part of. So one of the other comments related to that was that we weren't showing where the window operation was. The revised elevations show the operable window panels and the door access to those patios more clearly, and that's been revised in the plans as well. We updated some of the images that were provided for the materials to show the more accurately what we're presenting. And the last comment was the operable panels. So I think I walked you relatively extensively through the plans last time. I'm happy to go through those again, but to, Jay, if you can just flip to the plans quick. So basement level. Basement level is parking, access, and trash storage and open storage. First floor is your main entry and two residential units.
In the parking, do you have any spots for electric cars down there?
Electric cars? We don't at the moment, but I'm sure if the ownership wanted to provide them, he's welcome to do that, although that might be a little complicated with flood regulations. Now that I'm thinking about that, so I don't know if that's an issue. Anyway, two units on this level is a common entry corridor that serves an elevator to access the upper units, one egress stair and a waterside unit and a streetside unit. The streetside unit, as we just discussed, has the generous outdoor space as well as the fronting on Rowayton Avenue, as well as an on-grade patio area that should have some water views through the site and out to the Five Mile River. And the next level up is essentially a mirror of this level, where the common core is in the middle between the two units, which are separated into kind of two distinct, more distinctive building masses that you can see from the renderings. And the second floor units also have a duplex half-story additional living space. So there's some occupied area in the roof gables in the dormers. That's the overall plan in a nutshell. The upper floor units do have direct grade access through those stairs and the doors on the north side of the property that then go out to the public access way. Happy to answer any questions. And I did want to let Mr. Rowena know that all of the landscaping is new, so he won't have to be as concerned walking around the site with his dog.
Thank you.
There's some more questions of Mr. Brothier. I'll ask Mr. Stout to explain to you the minor changes that have occurred on the landscape plan as a result of the meetings with the Sixth Taxing District. So Wesley?
Sure. Good evening, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I'm Wes Stoudt of Wesley Stoudt Associates, landscape architect and planner. So yeah, I think that the site really speaks for itself. We're looking at transformative site development. It's a beautiful building. It's going to be a beautiful site. We're looking to provide public access, inviting public access. And so one of the components that arrives, you know, toward the, you know, in our later days, maybe since your last meeting, but we've been in touch and direct contact with the Sixth Taxing District, who owns the Rowayton Arts Center here at the top of the image. And we're really trying to, we really want to, and I think we've achieved a really nice balance of a new site frontage, residential and feeling, but very, very much sort of village and feel. So as was being alluded to on the sort of the bottom right of the image, but we've, you know, created really a lovely front yard garden, if you will, in sort of that village scale and village setting. And to complement that, that's complementing really what's going on to the north, bound to the south for that matter as well. But directly to the north, the top of the sheet here is the Arts Council, Arts Center. And they've got really sort of a very similar scaled and detail. We've actually picked up on the detailing from them, but they've got a couple low stone walls. They've got a flagstone walk from the public sidewalk into the front door. They've got some donor brick sort of entry plaza and whatnot. So what you're seeing here is, and Jason maybe help point, but starting on their site, there's a, we've labeled this existing there, yeah, the existing low wall that's sort of a hoop shape. And now we're going to add on our side a completion of that wall. So really sort of completes that planter wall. There's a really nice genko tree in there, which we're going to preserve. And then what we've done is from the putt right, from the public sidewalk, the white area there, where it says elevation 12.5, we're going to bring that in, that first five feet of public access as flagstone, which is similar to what we'll be using on our site. It's exactly what they're using on our site. So right there where the cursor is, there's currently a little concrete pad that transitions from the front of their property to the wood deck along the side. So we're going to tie in at that point with a flagstone walkway. And then in addition to rebuilding the low stone wall and landscaping, Jason, maybe you can point to the area where we're going to replace the deck boards. Yeah, we're going to rebuild that deck. And the stairway, there's a stairwell that then goes down to their sort of lower back area. It's currently roped off because it's collapsed. So we're going to help get that back in shape and put a new railing on it. And then you can see also along that, Jason, there's a green area. We're going to do, yeah, over, there you go, right by the deck. We're going to, it's all just concrete and stone and a mess right now. We're going to build some gently tiered little landscape planters with a lattice above, so it'll beautify and I think really become sort of an entry garden for this whole public access. And then the tan color is our five-foot wide public access way that picks up from the flagstone and gently ramps down to meet up with the back, which is really our waterfront promenade or waterfront wharf area. And there's a harbor, you know, proposed for shade and public rest. But, and I think really just a wonderful new addition to the Rowayton street front and a very inviting way down to the waterfront, and then a very inviting waterfront and beautiful waterfront once you get down there. So the taxing district is, again, we've met with them. We've talked to them. They're on board with it. And obviously, the work's going to be done at our expense, so all to their benefit. And I think we'll really have a nice addition to the Rowayton Village street front. Thank you. Happy to answer questions on any of the other parts as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The other thing that happened in the last month is we visited the Five Mile River Commission, and their focus of interest was making sure that there wasn't any diminution in the boat slips or change really in the boat slips. We weren't pushing them out. We weren't doing anything, and we assured them. We were leaving that portion of the property as is, and they were happy to hear that. They were also very focused, of course, on something I talked on earlier, which is water quality and stormwater management. They were very pleased that the impervious surface is being in, the pervious surface is being increased from, or decreased. Pervious is being angry by about, you know, 50%. The total impervious will be just over 50%. So it's a dramatic change. And of course, as I mentioned, the water's being treated before it enters the sound. And they gave you, and your record is a, you know, a letter of support. And so we're very pleased with that. The only other thing, you asked a question at the last hearing about our flood elevation, because another great benefit of this, of course, is that neither of the buildings that sit on the site now match FEMA regulations. They're non-compliant. This building will not only be compliant, as we assured you, but you asked us how compliant. And this is in an AE13 zone, which means our first floor has to be at 14, and the first floor here is at 16 and a half. So it greatly exceeds the minimum required by FEMA. And beyond that, I don't have a lot to add. We're pleased to take questions. We really think this project checks the box on really everything. Reduces traffic, increases impervious surfaces. It provides landscaping where there is none. It provides a spectacular-looking building. It provides public access, provides just about everything you'd want in a project. We're hopeful that you agree and you'd let us go forward with trying to get it out of the ground as soon as possible by approving it this evening.
Comments from commission members?
Ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Mr. Henderson, you just spoke to it, but can you just clarify again the, I believe at the beginning you said 97% impervious, and then what the percent is now? And just, was that part of the parking area? It was just wasn't a...
Change my, check my notes, because I think I said 96 or, I can't remember. It's 96 or 93 at the moment. Jason, do you happen to remember off the top of your head?
Sure, Jay Klein. And so 96.5, I think, existing, and it's going down. That impervious coverage today is 96.5, and it's going down to 53. I forget the decimal point, but it's going down to 53%.
Does that include, so the driveway is at pervious?
Most of the driveway is pervious. There are pervious pavers on the driveway.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions from commission staff? All right, if not from the staff, the commission members? All right. If not, we can move on to a vote. This is a site plan review only. Can... Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Want to make one comment, and it's a little bit off topic. It doesn't relate to the vote. We've enjoyed a really pleasant experience working with your staff on this. It's been very, they've been very helpful, very responsive, and I think that's a large part of the reason why we're able to feel like we've got everything buttoned up here. So kudos to them.
Well, we really appreciate hearing that. Thank you.
I think that's probably in contrast to his prior application.
Brian, do we have a draft resolution for this?
Yeah, let me get that pulled up for you, ma'am. So from the resolution that I had sent you, we had a couple of quick updates. We updated the dates of the plans that were just recently submitted. And then there was a minor change to item six, which is just in reference to any sort of incomplete work being required to get bonded. I think in my previous language, I had said that we would set the bond limit, but that's only for special permits, so we just quickly revision to that.
Can you blow that up just a bit? Okay, thank you.
And then kind of similar to your last discussion about easements prior to CECZ.
Right.
And as one last update in my memo, I mentioned DPW was still reviewing. They've since given final sign-off on the project.
Can I have a motion either for or against?
I'll move to approve it.
Okay, Rod moves to approve. Is there a second? I'm sorry, Michael, was that you?
Yes.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Sure, I'll go since Steve is muted. Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena? Muted, Rich. You're muted, Rich.
Muted. Just not visit vigorously.
I said two wonderful applications in a row. My vote is yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Schuman?
Yes. All right, the site plan review is approved.
Thank you very much.
All right, next on our agenda, review in action on new applications, 2021-03 SPR 761 Main Avenue, I Park Proposed, four-story, 132-unit multifamily dwelling on existing mixed- Four-story, one hundred thirty-two unit multifamily dwelling on existing mixed-use development. Preliminary review. This is also a site, site plan review. I'd welcome the representative of the developer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. It's sometime since we've been before the commission, so I need to introduce my team. I'm Lynn Ward from I Park Norwalk. With me is Lauren Calabria. And appearing before you this evening, if we have time for it, will be our architect Jesper Reiberg and our engineer Steve Pistola. This is an interesting situation. We have owned this property for some fifteen years. And it is a mixed-use facility. And in recent times, in several of our other I Parks, which are all mixed-use facilities in the tri-state metro areas, we found that people want to live where they work. And so we've been turning these, the evolution has actually been that they have become true live-work-play areas. And this is the same thing that we're coming with this proposal this evening. It is a hundred and thirty-two unit building, which would be all studios and one-bedroom units. And what we're going to do is very quickly show you three slides from an existing UNO as we branded this type of project. That's the first of our slides. It's UNO. It appeals typically to working people who come from the area. They've been pressed out of the area. And they want to live in the area. And this is the answer basically to that situation. That is, in Westchester, there are two other such buildings, three other such buildings on the waterfront in New Jersey. And this is pretty much what our proposal is for UNO at I Park Norwalk. I think that's all I need to tell you about the concept. There is I Park Norwalk. For those people who don't know, it is seven sixty-one Main Avenue, kind of across from the Walmart and the Staples. It's where the LA Fitness is located. We also have a big building there with, Norwalk Hospital has many medical offices. Cannondale Bicycles headquarters is there. There are two government agencies there. And the site on the southern end within the city of Norwalk is where we're proposing this development. I think the best thing for me to do right now is to turn this over to Jesper Reiberg, our architect, who'll show you a model of what we're going to do and some of the plans.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Good evening, everyone. And let me see if I can share my screen.
Mr. Reiber, can you introduce yourself? What firm you're with?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Jesper Reiberg. I'm one of the Director of Designs at PSNS Architecture. We're headquartered in Warren, New Jersey. And been doing a lot of work with I Park and Lynn and her team, both in New York and New Jersey and Connecticut. So we're looking forward to this exciting opportunity. And I was gonna start just showing a one-minute video of the project and give you an idea what our vision is for this.
Jesper, you might have to unshare your screen and then reshare. And then reshare to the, the video.
We don't often get music.
All right, take two. Stay set. Clipboard goes. Okay.
Mr. Reiberg, if I may, I can't tell from the video. But looking at the site plan, it looks as if this housing backs up directly adjacent to the railroad tracks. Is that correct?
Correct. I'll bring up a site plan here. And I'm not, do you see the site plan currently?
I do the same thing you just did, Jesper.
Share screen. All right, here we go. As you stated, the Danbury South Norwalk rail line is directly adjacent to the construction. And there's quite a great difference in between the two. And just to pick up where Lynn left off before, this is a hundred thirty-two unit complex. It's a four-story building. It's a three residential floors on top of a podium. The podium is hosting also a residential courtyard, green space. And I'm gonna quickly walk you through the floor configurations. And the civil engineer team will pick up on some of the site plan issues and concerns after following me. Part of this building is in a flood zone, so obviously, we can't have the entire building down in here. So we're only accommodating direct lobby access utilities and necessary means for, to support the rest of the building. There's parking under the building as well as surrounding it. And we have a entrance and for orientation purposes, this is facing the LA Fitness north side. You have the railroad tracks on the west side, on the upper part of the page. And then you have the Norwalk River on the south and east side. The entire site is basically paved at this point, and we're providing new parking layout under the building and surrounding it. There is electric car charging stations for the closest spots as a premium. I think that we have four stations at this point. The building is made up of one beds and, and studios. And they're typical units with center cores in the elbows. The second floor has the courtyard, as I mentioned previously, for, as an amenity space for residents. These are, you know, smaller units, singles mainly. And the big feature of the project is the courtyard and large balconies. Because, you know, due to the fact what we're doing today, the private space is becoming a premium, especially the outdoor premium space.
What are the average sizes of the apartments?
The studios are five hundred and thirty-five square feet. And the one beds are ranging between seven hundred and thirty-five square feet and seven hundred and eighty-five square feet.
Thank you.
And I will. Rent's gonna be?
I cannot answer that. Lynn has to answer that.
The rents are typically for these type of things in the two thousands, under three thousand, the most expensive unit would be just over three thousand a month.
Gotcha. So not real, so sorry, one question. You raised earlier, like, people being priced out of Norwalk and this being an option for them. It's really not. We're not really talking about that demographic at the two to three thousand range for a one-bedroom.
So I should just tell you one thing about that rent. This is a rep package. What we do with these buildings is we wire them. We put TVs into every unit because we found that people don't want to take a day off work to move into their unit. So the whole unit is done, all the appliances in, the TV's in, and you give one bill a month. That's your utilities, everything. That's your bill. But this is not affordable in terms of the category of affordable housing. Obviously, we understand there is a quotient that will be applied to this building of those, of those units.
Right. Yes, this will require, if I remember correctly, ten percent. So between thirteen and fourteen units.
Correct.
Typically, I don't know if you typically deal with that issue. But you should know, we like to know when, when we're looking at your plans, after they've been a little more developed, exactly where those units will be placed. Typically, we like to see them placed throughout the building.
We've done that before.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm taking those there as well. The, the floor plate is typical throughout the building stacked. The differentiator is the center core there, where it's a gallery out to the, on the second floor podium. On the third floor, we have a resident business center. And then on the fourth floor, there is a club lounge for people to mingle. The roof plan is one of the comments where it is obviously populated with condenser units, one for each unit, in addition to some elevator overruns, and all the rooftop equipment will be screened.
Are you looking at solar on that roof?
Yes.
Very flat?
We did discuss this, yes. We looked into the opportunity, and we just need to develop the design a little bit further to see what empty space we have left to occupy for affordable takes. And at the residence courtyard will also be a big portion of green roof application for sustainability. I'm gonna, elevation's so small at this time. I have some enlarged ones, so wanted to show the the units as well. We started with the smaller ones, but, you know, studios, they're not very small studios either. They're and, and all the units are ADA accessible, adaptable. So we call them all type A units. So they're very spacious by nature. Side-by-side washer and dryer in each unit, which is, you know, a premium. And then a lot of natural light in all the units. The studios don't have balconies, but all the one-bedroom units have large balconies. Maybe I should use a typical one. So very large balconies, lot of natural light, large kitchen. So these are fairly nice one-bedroom units.
When we quoted you the square feet, we were, of course, quoting indoor living space. But these are designed as indoor/outdoor living.
Correct. Here's also an enlargement of a piece of the elevation, just to kind of try to give you a little flavor of our vision. The exterior envelope is a combination, it's a rain screen panel. It's three different types of panels in color, two, one light off gray and a gray, and then a combination that has a little bit of a pattern on it. And these are randomly throughout the building. Dark mulleons and a lot of glass, as mentioned before. And then we have a lot of natural woods to give it a nice warm look to the human touch. And then we have that stripe with a black accent on the edges to give it a little sharpness. The base of the building will have a dark gray stack stone veneer to give it a sound, solid foundation. And it's also a trademark for all the I Park buildings to have the stone at the base.
And that stone is at the base of the main building where the Norwalk Hospital medical offices are.
Right. And, you know, then we have a couple of renderings. I should also mention that a lot of lighting on, in the building and on the site, all the lighting is full cutoff, down-facing lighting to minimize light pollution. But enough lighting that the people feel safe and comfortable in the space.
The, the intersection that serves the, these units at the intersection of, I guess, West Rocks and Route Seven. It's, it's not a good intersection. Have you conducted your traffic study yet?
Yes, we have. We've submitted our traffic study, and we understand we'll probably be subject to a peer review of our traffic study, which would be fine.
Right. Steve, on a project like this, can we do, if we choose to, a peer review on the architecture as well?
The only tricky part with that is we don't, the zone does not have design standards to point back to. So I mean, you have that authority in the regulations. It's just keep in mind, you know, the context of what you're looking at versus, versus other areas of the city.
Right, right.
This is an interesting building. This started out, as you probably remember, as Perkin Elmer's headquarters.
Right.
Is an old building in the front that sort of looks like a schoolhouse almost with Georgian columns. And subsequently, Perkin Elmer expanded the building northwards and southwards. Some fifteen years ago, we did a fairly significant rehab of the building and put two glass towers onto it, one of which is the Norwalk Hospital main entrance to their offices, their medical offices, and the other of which is the common area iconic almost glass tower now. So this is a difficult building for any kind of architectural, contextual discussion to go on. Essentially, it's, it's become a more contemporary, which is why this UNO model fits very well here. It's just by way of general comment about the different architectural styles.
I, excuse me, I understand you're also considering a hotel on, on this site, but on the piece of property that is in Wilton.
We show that on the plan that we have up there.
Can you point that out in the plan?
Yes. It's on the southern end of the property, towards the rail line. It's the same structure. It's the same number of stories over a podium. And recently, interestingly enough, we've had some people come back to us who are interested in becoming a flag for that hotel. For a while, that was very dead, but it's very recently become something of interest again.
Steve, what role, if any, do we play in that project?
So the similar to anything on a municipal boundary, I'm not sure what the Wilton regulation is in terms of permits required on their end, but there's likely there will be referral from the town of Wilton to the city letting us know that the application was coming in. I think the key thing for us would be coordination with them on traffic impacts, because I think it's the same exit in and out regardless of whether you're going to the hotel or to the residents or any of the businesses. So what impacts the intersection as a result of that is what we So what impacts the intersection as a result of that is what we would be concerned with.
Okay, then I assume.
Steve, we do hope that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's all right. Please go ahead.
We do hope that the hotel, since the Kent Street exit is right at the hotel. Will, and we would require that they direct their traffic to that exit.
Okay.
And then I, I, I assume, uh, that, uh, the town of Wilton, um, would have the same rights, uh, on, um, uh, the project on our side, and that is they would get a referral and have an opportunity, uh, to comment. Uh, particularly regarding, uh, the traffic issues.
Yeah, I believe, um, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Brian did touch base with, uh, Michael Rinn, who you may remember, who's now working for the town as well.
Yeah, so we sent, we sent our, uh, notification up to the, to Wilton Town Clerk.
Um, Steve, the, the, uh, if I recall, the staff has put together a memo on this. And I was wondering if you could share those comments.
Uh, yeah.
Pulling up the memo just by outlining them for us.
Sure, I'll let Mr. Baker, uh, go through this.
Yes, so regarding some of the, the staff comments, so it's, most of it is stuff that, um, needs to be, um, added to the application. So right now, um, they're subject to a conservation permit, so they're going through that process now. So, um, we need to have, uh, their approval before, uh, the zoning commission can act. Um, we recommend that the commission does send this out for a, a peer review for the traffic. Um, from the applicant, we were looking for, um, an affordable, uh, housing, uh, plan and then show which, where the units are on the architectural drawings. Um, another, uh, point was there was some grading or regrading proposed for the parking lot in the actual floodway. Um, per our flood regulations, uh, in order to do that, you need to provide a hydro, hydrologic or hydra- and hydraulic study, um, by the engineer. Um, that shows that there's a zero foot increase in any floods. Uh, the building itself is then the AE flood zone, so we just want to make sure that that first floor, uh, shows flood vents and, and complies with, uh, those flood regulations. Uh, um, landing landscaping plans, uh, should be provided. Um, those are just, uh, standard submittals as part of the site plan review process. Um, like Mr. Cantor had mentioned, um, anything like, uh, green infrastructure as far as solar panels or a green roof. Um, since the flat roof is proposed, it's a good opportunity for any sort of, uh, you know, green roofs or, uh, solar panels to go up there. And then, um, lastly, just to calculate on the architectures, the, um, recreation areas, we want to make sure we're complying with the minimum recreation areas, uh, uh, required, which I believe is, uh, it's a hundred fifty square feet per unit. So I know that they had, um, the courtyard area, so we want to see that area added up with, uh, some of the balconies and just to make sure that we comply with, with those standards.
All right, so it, it sounds as if there's still, uh, a lot of work to be done. Um, we have the option here, excuse me. Um, to require a, uh, public hearing. Um, uh, given, um, particularly traffic, uh, concerns and the size of the project. Uh, I'd be inclined, uh, to suggest we go to a public hearing, uh, to gather more input. But I'd like to hear, uh, from the other commissioners how you feel about that. I certainly we can't act this evening. We don't, we don't have the information, uh, we need. Um, but when we get back together on this, uh, uh, do we want to do it, uh, in a format similar to this evening? Or, uh, would we prefer to have a public hearing with public, uh, input?
I'm in favor of probably having a public hearing as well, Lou.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I completely agree with Michael. I think it's, uh, in this day and age, I think everything needs to be aired in the open and if it's a project of this size, it needs a, a public hearing.
Yeah, I think it's the size of the project that certainly
Yeah.
puts it over the line there. I would agree with the public hearing.
Uh, Steve, do we have to take formal action, um, uh, to make that happen?
I don't believe so. I, I think you had your discretion, but if you feel more comfortable, we can do a roll call vote on that, like.
Uh, it doesn't seem to be necessary. Um, I, I'm not hearing anybody objecting to, uh, handling this as a public hearing, so.
I, I think we can, we have to wait though, just before we schedule anything, we have to hear from conservation first, so that
Right, right.
When, when will the peer review traffic? Traffic?
Uh, we'd like to get started as soon as possible. The only issue, as you may recall, um, our contract had expired with our peer review, uh, both architects and, uh, traffic folks. We just concluded the interviews with both sets of firms, so we're working on contracts with them now. So we're hoping we can extend WSP's current contract so they can handle this, this application for us. But we, we hope to have an answer for that tomorrow at the latest.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a quick clarification question?
Go ahead.
Is the only entrance to this, the one directly opposite West Rocks Road? Is the hotel exit that you were talking about just an exit road?
No, it's an entrance and an exit.
Thank you.
So, um, Ms. Ward, any other, any further, uh, comment?
Only that, uh, we've, we're happy to have this public hearing because I think you'll find there's a tremendous amount of support to these type of developments now and our typical experience has been that they fully leased in four or five months. And they mostly go to people who are already working.
Oh.
To visit the facility. Our residents typically are medical assistants. Uh, people who work in those businesses in that industry. We have a number of residents in our other facilities who are police, fire or other local city employees. That's what we have found. So when we get it exactly right and we get our pricing right and we get the ease in the facility. By the way, these people are all a little more green even than the commission is. So they push the outer edge on us in terms of what we provide by way of amenity space and green space. It becomes quite exciting and that's why these work. We're a hundred percent occupied at all of these facilities.
Okay, uh, any, uh, final questions from, uh, commission members? All right, if not, we'll wait on, uh, staff. Um, uh, after you hear back from, uh, conservation, we'll, uh, set up the public hearing and, um, move this project forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
All right, next on our list, uh, twenty twenty-one dash oh four, R slash S P three East Wall Street Proposed Building Zone Regulation Text Amendment to Allow Historic Preservation Development in the, uh, Eastern Norwalk Village District. By, uh, a special permit. Um, we heard, um, some of this, um, uh, at our, um, at our last meeting. Um, so let's see if we can move this, uh, forward.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Craig Flaherty. I'm a principal and senior engineer with Redness and Meat, a land use consulting company with offices in Stamford and uh, in Wilton. Uh, this is actually our first, uh, presentation to the full commission, uh, this evening. Um, but I, I will try, uh, I think because we're just starting our CAC process, we'll leave some of the technical stuff uh, until a subsequent meeting, uh, so we might do a little less site plan tonight, uh, but still introduce you to it. Uh, but we'll, because the historic components and the architectural components are, are kind of key to the text amendment, uh, we will cover those tonight and we'll talk about text amendment. Um, a little, a little bit. Uh, it was, it was a pleasure to actually watch your, uh, presentations tonight. Um, hopefully we'll get to a point, uh, where, uh, I, I agree with Mr. Rowena. The first two applications were wonderful applications, as was the third, but, uh, uh, hopefully we'll, in a couple of meetings, we'll get to the same place. Um, we're excited about this one. Um, it replicates a similar application that, that we got approved a couple of years ago and built. Um, I do have to apologize, we don't have any video. Um, but if you want, I could play some background music while we talk, but, so. You can just
Oh, video no approval.
Yeah, you put your recommendations in the chat and
Comedy hour.
We'll see, we could do the DJ, but, um, the, uh, uh, so the applicant, of course, is, uh, three East, uh, Wall Street LLC. But that, that is, um, Anthony Gaglio Junior and Anthony Gaglio Senior of, of Viking Construction. Um, and, uh, you, uh, 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 saw them last again with this application a couple of years ago, having to do with three Elmcrest Terrace, um, over by the hospital, another, uh, historic preservation, uh, with some, uh, bonus incentives. Um, and it was a regulation we wrote for that project that we're, um, trying to mirror here in the East Avenue. Um, uh, District, um, Village District. Um, so, uh, the other team members on the call tonight, uh, are, are project architect Ken Borison. Um, uh, my colleague Vincent Hines, who helped with a lot of the engineering and application prep. Uh, uh, our, uh, uh, historic consultant, uh, heritage resources, Todd Bryant, uh, you'll be hearing from tonight. Um, landscape architect Matt Pop, who of course you feel familiar with, and, uh, our project attorney, uh, Jay Klein from Carmody. Um, uh, we've, we've been working on this, uh, project for close to a, a year now. Um, uh, looking at different design options, uh, looking at the rehabilitation necessary to the, the manor house. Um, uh, doing necessary surveys and research and technical drawings. Uh, and having conversations with staff along the way, uh, to help hone, uh, the proposal. Uh, and the, uh, the text amendment you're going to see tonight. Um, uh, said simply, we're proposing a thorough rehabilitation of the historic manor house, which you'll see. Um, demolishing a smaller accessory structure to the rear. And adding a new structure to the site that increases the unit count on the property by ten apartments. Uh, that goes from sixteen existing to twenty-six proposed. So at the end of the day, it's ten units. Three of those, uh, ten units, uh, will be workforce housing units, which is new uh, to the East Avenue Village District. We're actually adding the requirement, uh, that, uh, this project meet uh, the affordability criteria in your workforce housing regulations as part of our text amendment. Um, and although we're still early in our process, we did have an opportunity to meet with the historical commission last night. Um, and, um, they, uh, received the project favorably and voted to endorse both the text amendment. Um, and the special permit application, likely correspondence, uh, from the chairwoman, uh, is forthcoming. Um, I'm going to share the screen now, hopefully. My full presentation. Let's see. Okay, so here we go. Uh, so I've introduced the team, which you see on the right. Uh, and you've got a little preview of the existing, um, manor house at the top of the screen and the proposed manor house at the bottom of the screen. Um, but as I said, I wanted to remind you of, uh, the success we had at, uh, Elmcrest Terrace. This was the house at Elmcrest Terrace when the Gaglios purchased it. Um, and, uh, after your assistance and the approvals that we got, um, this is the house today. So if you haven't driven by, it's, it's worth the trip. Um, and this is the success, uh, we're trying to replicate behind the house. Uh, in this case is a four story addition, uh, with, uh, three stories of apartments or two and a half stories of apartments over, over a level of parking. Um, but it's these kind of infill developments where, um, you create an incentive for a property owner or developer to really invest in thorough renovations. Um, that, that make this happen, so the, the, the financial resources to do these renovations and preserve these homes for all of Norwalk to enjoy, uh, comes from the additional units that get put, um, on the back. And that's the same thing we're proposing to do here. Here's kind of a blown out aerial. Uh, this is East Wall Street, of course. This is East Avenue, uh, running on the right side of your screen. Uh, we're pretty darned close to, uh, the old, uh, center downtown here on Wall Street. Uh, the Poco Project, uh, and the Theater. Um, Head Harbor is essentially right across the street, historical, uh, commission property, Norwalk property is here across the street. Uh, First Congregational Church wraps us on two sides, a funeral home on this side. And, um, this is just a blow up of the site. Uh, you can see the manor house in the front, uh, and the smaller accessory structure in the back. Um, so I think, uh, because as I mentioned, the historical components are, are kind of critical to the consideration of the text amendment. Um, we would ask Todd Bryant to kind of, uh, take you through, uh, his research and findings on the home to kind of set the stage. So, um, Todd, I'll, I'll turn it over to you and advance your slides when you're ready.
Thanks, Craig. Good evening, uh, commissioners. Uh, so let's go to the next slide. This is a pretty interesting house. Um, in, uh, about eighteen seventy, uh, Henry T. Morgan married Elizabeth Lockwood, who was the sister of uh, um, another Saint John Lockwood, who, um, owned a good deal of property in Norwalk. He was apparently the only one who was interested in real estate. Uh, however, uh, uh, Henry's wife, Elizabeth Lockwood Morgan passed away in eighteen eighty. And when he did, the house came back into the Lockwood family. And, uh, what happened then, if you give me the next slide. Is the house pretty much as we see it today. Um, they expanded it substantially. They added a port cochere on the right. They added this, uh, kind of turret on the second floor. And the reason they did that is because, uh, the Lockwood family had a son named George who was disabled. He was in a wheelchair. And in order to give him, um, of, of, in order to keep him from feeling like he was closed in. They built this addition on the second floor. That was his room. And it, it allowed him to, uh, have a, a kind of a panoramic view of the city of Norwalk, Norwalk Harbor, the head of the harbor, this whole area. It was a, it was a tremendously, uh, wo- wonderful thing for them to do for their son. And you can also see in this image that it was painted on somewhat differently than it is today. Um, this was not unusual for, uh, houses in the era. Um, and, uh, it also, you can also see that there is a, um, a row of balusters, uh, balustrade up here that, um, mimics the, uh, balusters on the porch. So, uh, let's go to the next slide. You can hear, here you can see the balusters a little bit more closely. You can see some of the, uh, paint schemes a little more clearly. Um, and so especially these things are up here in the bracket where the brackets are painted. All of these images, by the way, are courtesy of the history room at the Norwalk Library, which has been tremendously uh, helpful and, um, and, and kind to us in sending us scans and images. The next image, please. So this, this one we can solidly date. This is nineteen one. This was the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of Norwalk. This was a huge deal. It was a week long celebration. There were dinners, there were lectures, there were parades. There's a book that's been published. Actually, it's all available online, Norwalk after two hundred and fifty years. But, uh, in fact, when Anthony Gaglio first saw this image, he said, my God, we're going to have to get more funding. We just don't have enough to. But, but in any event, uh, you can see, uh, you can't quite see the, the cresting that's up here on the top. You can see it, actually, can you go back one slide, near two, two slides? Uh, you can't see it there either. But there is iron. You can just barely see it here. There's iron cresting, also a typical sort of Victorian, uh, uh, element. Yeah, you, yeah, you can see it right there. You can see it right there. See it on the right? Kind, you can, can zoom in a little bit. There you go. And that still exists. So this is basically the house that, uh, existed in nineteen one. I think the only major difference between what you see today, besides the paint color, is the, the lack of this, uh, uh, on the, uh, baluster on the, uh, on the turret. And the lack of these, um, kind of drip molds. And the lack of these kind of drip molds and shutters. Other than that, it's the same house. And down here, you can just see, you can maybe zoom in on that a little bit, Craig. This is George for whom this room was built. And by coincidence, I live on Morgan Avenue and by coincidence, Frederick St. John Lockwood, who owned this property, and it was his sister who was who passed away. They were going to build a new house where Morgan Avenue is now. And the reason, and that is the reason it's named Morgan Avenue, is after Henry Morgan. So should we have the next slide, please? Now here we go to the to the stable or carriage house that's in the back of the property. This is what it originally looked like. And you may or may not know that there is a National Register Historic District, the Norwalk Green Historic District that encompasses this area and these two buildings. And the house is definitely listed as a contributing asset. But the this building, the stable is not only not, it's not listed as contributing, it's not listed as non-contributing, it's not even mentioned in the nomination. Despite the fact that there are eight other carriage houses and garages that are listed as either contributing or non-contributing, depending upon their age or level of integrity. So whoever wrote that nomination or and the Park Service deemed and let's go to the next slide so we can see a little bit more of the original carriage house. So you can see these wonderful plaques on the door, the doors themselves. And whoever this lucky kid was, it's about to drive away on this in this Surrey or whatever one calls those. So now let's go to the next slide and see what it looks like today. So that's what it looks like today. It doesn't, there's no doors. All these windows are changed. The pinnacle is gone. And I suspect that it looked like this in 1986, and this is why it was not even mentioned in the National Register nomination. So this is a building that architectural historians at that time, and I can agree with them, has decided has no merit. Next slide, please. So in order to get the house back to something like the 1901 color scheme, I've found four books that we can use as reference. And also this will be in consultation with the Historical Commission as well. And we are, and we're also looking at doing some paint analysis to find out what it, what was really there. And if you think we can't, then we're going to work with these books. So thanks, Craig. I think that's it unless somebody has some questions.
Thank you, Todd. So this is the house that we're working with. We went over in detail the restoration required with the Historic Historical Commission last night. I won't go through everything with you, but to say, and if you have any questions about it, Anthony Gaglio can can jump in. Basically, everything you're looking at needs to be replaced or stripped and restored. The exterior of this home, you know, has the same materials it had largely 130, 150 years ago. And it's, it's, you know, it 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 just needs a lot, a lot of, this one needs a lot of work. If you can believe it, actually more work than three Elmcrest. So the siding gets stripped and replaced, the windows, the trim, the slate roof, the flat roof on top, which is leaking. You know, that that iron cresting gets pulled down, sand blasted, painted, put back up. And you know, here's just a hint of some of the detail that they're going to go into. So all these shapes are effectively custom shapes, and they're going to get them effectively mold, create a mold around them so that they can be replicated out of composites and 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 put back into place. There Anthony's actually holding up one on his screen. So it's quite a thorough process that has to, has to happen to make this thing shine again, which is what they want to do. And we'll get to the text amendment in a second. We'll show you, this is of course a first cut rendering of what we'd like it to look like at the end of the day. Ken, maybe you can walk us through this and the rest of the architectural renderings. You're muted, Ken.
I'm still muted.
Oh, there we go. Sorry. All right. Evening Commissioners. Yeah, so this was a first cut rendering. Obviously, we're going to do some research in terms of the the paint colors and get it as as close as we can to the original. But you know, certainly more colors than a whitewashed building. And you can see on the the second floor octagon turret, the added balustrade that's not there now that we're going to add back. And and then just a very, very variegated color. So if you go to the next slide. Yeah, we're back to the the condition of the carriage house. We about, we evaluated that in the in coordination with Todd Bryant's research and he determined, as he mentioned, that the auxiliary structure had lost so much of its architectural integrity, it was not included in the contributing asset of the Norwalk Green Historic District. And its loss would not harm the integrity of the district. So given that fact and its poor overall condition, this former stable apartment on the rear is going to be demolished. And so we'll have a small extension on the back of the original house to make room for the new building. Next slide. So again, you can see this is the shot from across the street, the historic commission property. And you know, you can see that with the trees that this building is not any really more visible than the one that was there. Yeah, back in there. And if you zoom it, go to the next slide. So again, very, that's actually a photograph or the view is a photograph taken from the sidewalk on that side of the street. And if we remove the tree, then you can sort of see the addition. So the design is to be complimentary. It tips its hat to the manor house. The new apartment building uses a hip and gamble roof at the upper level to soften the scale. We also, I think one of the Commissioners mentioned lowering the building a little bit. I think we ended up lowering it about six inches on the grade and also we shallowed up the the upper sloped roof. So we came down about a foot. The the top of the building is now about a foot below where the cresting is. So again, it defers to the original house. Qs are taken from the manor house such as, but not limited to the slope of the Mansard portion, the same same angle. And new dormer configurations that kind of mimic the dormers a little bit different. There's a roof deck behind the shallower slope tip portion of the structure and any kind of mechanical that would be up there is also hidden. Cementitious siding and trim materials will be used for exterior walls. Energy efficient windows that are similar in style to the original house will be used. Roofing's asphalt shingles with a complementary color to the slate of the manor house. Bay windows punctuate and give relief to the larger facades in the north and south. There's a lattice planter at the center of the north elevation that hides the cars from the view. And care was was taken to make sure the structure was complementary. And again, the the paint colors are more muted. So that again, they defer to the manor house as being the painted lady. I mentioned that I think of it as as almost like the matriarch and and the cousin or grandchild has come to visit. So that kind of gives you a sense of the building. And I guess, Craig, you can take it. Is there, is there any questions? Happy to answer them.
I have a question. I might have missed a previous meeting where this was previously discussed mainly about the height in the back.
Yeah.
And I would think a goal would be, you know, densifying this area of Norwalk and bringing, you know, more units down here as much as possible. So I don't remember that, the conversation there, but if allowed, wouldn't, would you go another story higher in the back?
That's a, that's a great question. So we actually started this process with a four story design. And really that what the four story design allowed us to do, we had a couple more units, maybe two or three. But what the four story design allowed us to do was have a smaller footprint. So you know, this, we had to extend the foundation in the roof to go to a lower footprint. But the thought was when we showed some initial cuts of the fourth, the four story version to staff and initial reviews was concerned that maybe the four stories was out of scale with the East Avenue Village District and 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 maybe became, you know, bigger than the front house. So the the request was actually to to try to come down to that three stories, which is effectively what's allowed in the zone today. So if you give Anthony too much leash, he would be happy to give you a four story building here.
Yeah, I'd be curious to hear what staff thought there would be, especially some of the other projects that are just been approved down there. I'm not sure how this is any less dense than the Poco Project or
It is a different zone, right? So Poco is in the Central Business District. And this is in the East Avenue Village. Things change when you cross over the river. Well, you get, you get head of the harbor, which is right at the river, which is still on the CBD. But then
Then we cross over that way.
Yeah, and we're, you know, but to your point, this particular location to go back to the to go back to the aerial for a second to answer this question. This is really a good transition location to kind of step down in density as we go. I mean, you've got Harbor House right here, which is in the Central Business District, literally one property away. And you can see Poco there as well.
Right, and behind you is the church and no one's really living, you're not overshadowing anyone.
Funeral home, so it it makes a lot of sense for the site. And we're going to talk about this when we get to the text amendment, because of course, text amendment is going to apply to the district. So we want to make sure it makes sense for the site like we think it does. We want to make sure it makes sense for the district too. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Further to Nick's question. So you've got three stories in the front, three stories in the back. What's the actual height? Are, is it, are the, is the rear building the same height as the front?
I think we think it's just shorter.
Yeah, I I can comment to that. So the allowable height is 35, I believe. The height with the cresting of the original building is probably a little bit higher than that. This, as we let sloped it down, is about 34.2 or something. So you know, it's 10 inches to a foot lower than the
Correct me if I'm wrong. Doesn't the property scale up as you move toward the back?
It slopes up, yes.
Yeah.
The two, we, sorry, but if I could just jump in here for a second, Mr. Chairman. There was a lot of consideration and we spent some time on some summer afternoons, really looking at the elevations here and what you know, how this back building was going to affect the building in front, and it's almost invisible. In fact, we we spent some time in the, in that section between the townhouse and the burying ground, which is where they, the Historical Society sometimes has events. So I thought that was an important area. Let's see what it was going to look like from that point. And if you go to the previous slide, that's what you're, that's what you're going to see. So it's, it's, you don't see much more than you would than you do now of the existing carriage house.
If you went even higher, would you see much more?
Yeah.
It would probably be similarly
It'd be similarly plain there.
I think the balance again is it might work on this site. You know, but how does, how does that proliferate with the addition of the text amendment? And the other restrictor to density in terms of do we want to add more is really parking, right? We have to have enough parking spaces onsite at the end of the day. Which kind of gets us to this, this next slide. So this, this gives you kind of the plan view of what's happening. So basically, you know, the front third of the property is going to be as it is today. You've got the preserved and restored manor house. The existing drive is the same. We're going to try to save these trees on the edge as well. And then the back is the part that gets redeveloped, and this is the footprint of the of the new structure. And again, that's the play, right, is the you know, you're basically going to have the same parking. Could you have a smaller footprint, a taller building? It's more expensive, certainly to do the the shorter one. We thought it was the right choice overall after hearing some comments and considering everything. So that really gets us to, you know, what we wanted to focus on tonight, which is the proposed text amendment. And and 90% of the words of this text amendment are the same as the words to the text amendment in the de-residence zone. You also have historic preservation allowances built in now in the CBD. And I think the first zone they got put into in Norwalk, care of the director, was the South Station Design.
Craig, can you blow that up for us?
Of course. Let's see. I will definitely blow it up for you.
Thank you.
So first paragraph was not changed at all. In order to encourage the preservation of structures contributing to positive aspects of community character, the commission may allow minimum area dimensional requirements such as yard step back buffer with a recreation area or parking requirements to be reduced or a maximum requirement to be increased such as height, residential density or maximum building area, provided that. One, this is a same point, but different area. The subject property has a minimum area of 30,000 square feet. And that really is there to restrict the applicability of the amendment. You know, we want to work with larger properties where we have room for parking, where we have room for landscaping versus incentivizing some of the smaller properties. That's something you might consider changing in the future. If you like how this comes out, you think it should be replicated on additional properties. We can go through basically five properties that are over 30,000 square feet that contain historic structures. So ours is here in red at three East Wall. First Congregational Church is a, is a historic structure, so their property is over 30,000 square feet. St. Paul's has two structures listed in the district are over 30,000 square feet. Norwalk Inn has the the structure here listed in the, in the district at the front left corner. There are over 30,000 square feet, you know, unlikely that any of those properties get redeveloped in the near, in the near term.
Right.
One that maybe this would apply to in the future, depending on how things go, but it's been owned by the family for some time, and that's the Collins Funeral Home. Similar kind of property to ours. So that's the applicability that occurs with this area restriction. And we can get a list of staff of all the properties and and the different areas of those. Next couple, next three points again are replications. It's a listed structure, local, state or federal. We have to be very clear about, clearly identify the increase or decrease of 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 the zoning criteria. That's effectively required by case law. We have to have qualified historic architect, which we do. And I skip over five for a second because that's really where most of our conversation is going to be. It's got to be referred to Historical Commission, which we did, and they endorsed the project. And then you make effective determinations that it does in fact contribute to community character and person possess a degree of historic significance. And this gives us the flexibility to substitute and modernize building materials as long as the character aesthetic and architecture of the building is is maintained. And of course, a special permit is required and only and stays valid only as long as the structure is is saved. So really the meat of the text amendment gets into subsection five, and it's what our ask is. And our ask is effectively building coverage, residential density and and the height. Now, technically in the zone, you allow two and a half stories and 35 feet for properties. The inn is allowed to be a full three stories. But if you look around the zone, those two and a half stories look a lot like three stories. And there's even some legacy buildings that are full three stories and full four stories in, in the district. So really not asking for much in the way of height, other than effectively a half, half story, but that doesn't change the massing that you're looking at. So it comes down to this building coverage. The building coverage, as we just talked about, goes back and forth with height, right? If we can go taller, we don't need as much building coverage. But if we have to stay shorter, we need more building coverage to fit the units in. And basically, we're talking about two levels of apartments over the, over the garage. And the last is residential density. And again, instead of letting this incentive portion get away from us, we put a cap that you can't get more than 36 units on a particular lot. Some of the church parcels and so forth are very large. I don't see them getting redeveloped, but we figured it was easy enough to throw a cap in the, in the language, just so we're talking about a reasonable sized project. So that's the ask. That's, that's our attempt effectively to balance providing this incentive that, that gives the gaglio's the financial means to really do this thorough job on a restoration of the manor house. You know, but is that, is that the right balance for the rest of the zone? Do we like the reg? I think maybe Steve Clappin and I want to make sure that he's happy with it in terms of applicability on other properties. But that's, that's really where we're at.
So Craig, we will let you move this forward, continuing with your design and the other necessary approvals, CAC and so forth. And when staff advises, we will set a public hearing.
Yeah, just to jump into, so this is since East Avenue Village District, it is subject to Village District review, similar to the 96 East Avenue application. So we'll get that process started. And then I just had two quick questions for, for Craig, or maybe one at this point, because I might have forgotten one. And not that it's your, your guys' problem, but the funeral home next door, I believe, uses 3 East Wall Street as an exit from the property. Is there any sort of discussions that you guys have been working on with them or?
Yeah, I mean, we, Anthony has opened a dialogue with them, you know, but at this point, you know, I think, well, we'll say that that's ongoing. Although we, we're not crazy about having the funeral home traffic go through the residential development.
And then I just remembered my other one. So when looking at the, for the de-residential section where we're, we're taking a lot of this language from and putting it into East Avenue Village District, there's a reference to, in, in the D section, it's the historical architecture is listed as 35 CFR, and then in this one, it's 36 CFR. I'm not sure if there's a difference between the two or?
We'll track that down and make sure we got the right reference.
Okay.
Thirty, sorry, 30 is Todd Bryant, 36 is correct.
I knew we brought him for a reason.
Hey, I do what I can.
So I guess maybe you got to go fix the other one. Call the Scribners there. I don't think you need a, a public hearing for that.
Any, any further questions from commission members regarding the project?
No, the only thing I would say is the sort of the line that I was going on earlier, like it, it's so rare that we get a project like this to do a true infill, to really build it out in a way that, you know, could be really interesting. I would ask staff to consider if we want to increase the density there in some way to encourage more units or more people in the area.
You know, one thing that, well, I mean, the one thing that, that they did really want to do, and we went to the three-story format, was the, the roof deck is an amenity space. But right now, the only thing that goes up there is effectively the stair tower to get access to it. And the elevator. And so having an amenity room adjacent to the roof deck, you know, with the gym or community room, is certainly desired. You know, again, if if that made sense with the ranks and everything else.
Greg, did you go into detail on the workforce housing?
Yeah, well, I mentioned, we're, we're, so two things. One, where the gaglio's like to operate, even with their market rate units, is generally at a lower threshold than you're seeing with a lot of the big development, amenity-rich developments. So though the, the 90% of the units that they're going to provide here, both with the kind of small and, and unique units in the front and the new units in the back is serving what, what they consider a working class tenant. But we're, again, proposing three workforce housing units to be a part of this development. You're going to get two units in the front building and one of the new units in, in the back building, all told. So that was another, you know, we're, we're we've, we've been, we've been pushed in three areas, just in terms of the, making the financial penciling work. One was, you know, the significant restoration of, of the front building. The more expensive format of three stories versus four stories. And, and a grain of workforce housing unit. So we're really right, right in the box now in terms of what they can, what they can deliver for a successful project here.
Can I ask you, when you say it's for working-class people? What rents are you talking about?
In the front, in the, in front house today, the rents vary between 1,300 and 1,700.
Okay. And that's what they'll be?
Yeah, I mean, they'll be what the market bears. And, you know, maybe with an improved skin, they'll get a little bit more, but really those, those front units are driven by their kind of peculiar floor plans, and they're generally just a little smaller in nature.
But there's a need for that. We have the elderly, we have local firemen and, and teachers and people that still want to live in Norwalk, and they can't afford $2,500 or $2,200.
But two thousand, yeah, $2,000 for a studio.
Yeah. Our new unit in the back, we, we were very, very successful over at Elmcrest, especially with people working at home. So we, we've, we've worked on a model for the last 10 years. It's a one-bedroom den where it gives that one-bedroom unit a little bit extra space for you to work at home, get away from your spouse, watch TV, call it an office, whatever you want. It just gives you a little breathing room and very, very attractive. And the manor house is, like Craig said, they're a little cut up, a little unique, so we can have a good mix of both. And by bringing in, and we do a ton of affordable housing throughout the state, by bringing in that kind of concept where, where there is no, there, there's no rule for it now in this zone. We think it's part of what, what, what we should see in Norwalk and, 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 and have a nice, safe apartment for everyone, within everyone's reach. Most of the units in the manor house meet the criteria now. But we've, we've, we've agreed to deed restrict three, three units on site. But it doesn't mean we're going to jack the rents on the other ones. It, it is a very expensive renovation to the, to the manor building. But the problem is, the only thing holding it together now is the paint. And it, it really needs some TLC. And it needs a the, the renovation we want to do is a 20-year renovation. We don't want to touch that building for 20 years. So we're going to do it right from the beginning and buy new slate for the roof. We're going to buy special moldings and, and cast new moldings and, and balustrades for the, the deck and put it back into its 150-year-old history.
Thank you, Anthony. Any questions before we move on? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Good night, folks. Thank you.
Okay. The final item under review and action is Site Plan Modification 50 Washington Street. Proposed change to use to existing rooftop terrace to include public events.
Chairman, I think I mentioned to you, I may, was going to recuse myself.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. All right. Mr. Fischel, Mr. Oz.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Lyle Fischel, architect who's working with Mike Oz on 50 Washington Street. I'll just share my screen quickly, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mike, and then we'll make this quick and painless. Okay? So you all know the building. Am I sharing the screen yet?
Not yet.
How's that?
There you go.
Okay. You all know the building. It's, was probably the first skyscraper in Norwalk. Depends what your definition is. We're taking this area of the rooftop and we're taking, we've already created a tenant-use-only space as approved by zoning. And we are trying to make that now private-public, open-use space for, other than the tenant use only. That is what the building looks like. We all know that. This is a, a pretty much an accurate layout of the seating that will take place. There are pavers that run throughout. We have proper clearances to all the exiting. We are mode-wise, building code-wise, where occupant load is beneath what we can put up there. And we're meeting all ADA requirements. So now I will turn it over to Mike. Mike?
Yes, good evening. This is Mike Oz. And thank you for your time and the consideration. In fact, we, this is a great photo of what the rooftop used to look like. I'll try to put some photos of what we actually built on the rooftop, if that's okay.
Go right ahead.
And the photos were taken when it wasn't 100% complete.
We just lost your photos.
Can you see that?
No.
Brian? You want to go back to my screen saving?
Can you see it?
Yes, now we can see it.
Okay. So in fact, we are now at the, at the last stages of building up the roof. We had one event on the rooftop in September, and we've done it when when the roof was partially complete. And it was so successful. We got a lot of people out of New York City. And it's not to be so success, so successful. And we got so many, so much feedback on it, where we thought, my God, this could be probably the, the best marketing material we can have for Sono and for the building. This is the kind of like a single opportunity that coincidentally, we wanted to build it as a, as an amenity for our tenants. But it turned out to be that it, it has, it's so desirable that if we turn it into a public, if we open it up to the public and turn it into event-based, the amount of people that we can draw into Sono is, is going to be fantastic. In fact, we started a marketing campaign on the building. And we were marketing the brand-new coworking that we built in the building. And we showed the roof as one of the amenities of the building. And it, it was amazing to see how many calls we got. It was a little very frustrating to see that we got very little calls for the coworking. But yet we got almost every single day a call for the rooftop. And we started, we decided to kind of explore it a little bit further. And we got in contact with some event planners and catering companies. And it, it appears that some of the best, best event planners out there simply want to take part of this. And if we can simply do the rooftop and throw corporate events in there or events or private events for individuals, it will draw a lot of attention, both to Sono and certainly will help us to expose everything we've done in the building, which we've still been having a hard time. You know, certainly no need to mention that the difficulties that the office market is experiencing in general, but specifically now after the COVID. So anything we can do to help us to market the building and show all the outstanding things that we've done with it would be very, very helpful for us.
How, how many square feet is that event space?
Sorry, I can't tell you that off the top of my head, but I could get that information to Zoni.
Yeah, I think we'd like to know that.
I think in, in my memo, it was roughly off of Lyle's plan, like 1,900, like 1,900?
So two, roughly 2,000 square feet?
Yeah.
And how many people can safely be accommodated in 2,000 square feet?
I think the, the code, it's more of an egress width and path of travel, and it was upwards. Mike, do you remember that number? Once again, I don't have that.
I think that the, I think it's about 120.
And
I'll also confirm.
And is it your expectation that you would have music up there as well?
Yes, with, of course, limited what is allowed by code and with, with the town, of course.
Steve, is do we, do we have applicable code for something like that?
I, I have to double-check specifically what they were proposing versus what, what's in the code. So there's, there's different rules regarding amplified music, so we'd have to confirm that. So I, I think if you went down the approval route, going by the, the resolution by it, that staff had put together, just want to make sure that whatever they do complies with the noise ordinance.
And we would
An exciting
Follow any regulations required. Is this a photograph we're looking at, or is it an architect's rendition?
No, no, this is a photograph. This is a, this is a drawn photograph of one event that we held in September. The, the only event we held in September.
Can you, can you enlarge that at all?
I can, I can.
Okay, yeah, you got it. Thanks. That makes my vertigo complete.
All right. So Richard is not going to the top of 50 Washington Street.
No.
Yeah, me neither.
I'll be there.
I'll, I will, I will tell you this, that 30, maybe 35 years ago, the Transit District did a series of Discover Norwalk tours, which started and ended at 50 Washington Street. And at the end of the tour, we took people up to the roof, which was then a helipad. And it was mostly my daughters, who were young children at the time, served cookies and soda to the folks on the tour.
Oh, I remember that helipad. That's right.
There is a generator on it now. And on that same helipad, same helipad is still there, that they put a generator years ago. And we thought it's a perfect area to have a display, either a band or a DJ, again, limited to what is allowed in the noise ordinance. But I think we can now open it up for everyone's enjoyment. And I truly believe this is a fantastic, fantastic marketing piece.
That's a really unique spot.
Oh, it certainly is.
I mean, I have more photos if you guys want to look.
Because you can imagine unobstructed views all the way around. And then even in the, versus like a Stanford, where it has a lot more rooftops in Norwalk, obviously, you have so much more obstruction now.
Yeah, it's a perfect viewing area.
This is one of the most amazing photos. Can you guys see this?
It's still the same photo that you had up.
It is. There you go. All right.
Well, and of course, you're all welcome to visit, right? Mike?
Yeah, of course. That's the intention. We're planning if this is going to get approved, we're intending and hopefully if, if everybody feels safe enough, we're hoping to have a large or a grand opening event to the community. Sometimes in May or June.
That picture you showed us, you said, was it this past September?
Here you go. So this is, this is a photo. Yes, it is. That's what's past September. Yes.
I, I didn't notice people wearing masks. I'm just curious.
Oh, no, people were with masks. Let me put it back. Those were all friends and family out of New York City, but, but that doesn't explain it, but you're absolutely correct.
We'll make sure that COVID policy is followed from this point on.
Yeah, I guess people felt a little bit comfortable at that point.
Yeah.
But you know, had their mask initially.
Very nice.
Steve, we, we have a draft resolution on this. Can we put that up for us to take a look at?
I can pull that up for you.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know who's screen. Mike, I don't know if that's your screen share. If you could stop sharing and Michelle can pull hers up.
Can there? Can you see it?
It's a squirrel. Yeah, there you go.
Okay, can you move it up so we can read, read it?
Yeah, I think that's it.
That's it. Yeah.
That's it.
It's real short and sweet. And I didn't know if you guys wanted to add anything to it or.
Well, I think we should have language regarding the use of music.
Sure.
To make sure that it complies with the requirements of the new sound ordinance.
Yeah, Michelle, you had sent me some language before that we were talking about. If you want to, you know, put that into it, we can, we can take a look at it.
Okay.
Can I ask Mr. Oz a question?
By all means, of course.
Is the building primarily filled with commercial tenants or are there residential tenants there as well?
At the moment, it's 100% commercial.
So what, what do the tenants use that for? They go up there and eat lunch and?
Well, we haven't, we haven't opened it yet. We, we are still in final stage of construction. We just rushed up for that one event and then we took it all apart and started all over again. But we are basically about four weeks from completing the rooftop 100%. And yes, the intention is simply for allowing the tenants to either entertain, to go up and work, take their computer and work out there. And it turned out to be, at least at this point with the COVID and regulations, are probably the best place to sit outside and, and carry the computer. We we have 100% access, Wi-Fi, we have Wi-Fi up there. We have set up outlets everywhere. So people can plug their computer and simply work from there. So yes, and we, we we're getting on a daily basis, a request to go up there. We haven't opened it officially yet. That can happen in April 1st.
What, what would be the plan in the event that you having a, either a public or a private event scheduled for up there and you end up within clement weather?
That's an excellent question. And thank you for asking this, by the way. So this is right now our first phase to what we really want to do, what want to turn the building into, which is the epic center of Sono. And we are working currently with couple of event planners and catering companies to turn one of the spaces on the lower level, on the first floor or ground level, to be more correct, into a continuous event space, which will be a backup plan for for, for if a situation of this nature happens. At the moment, we, we don't have the perfect solution. There is a solution. We do have a solution. Where we have, we planning to, at least until we build our own event space to work with the space next door. The previous more and more space. That's our plan for the short term. But long term, we, we want to build something a lot more that be more of a 21st century, let's say, and complement everything else we've done in the building. But that's an excellent question because that's one of the biggest topics as to if we want to turn this into a very successful event place, we do need to have a backup place.
Steve, I'm looking at what you've typed here. After condition, is that for use of music?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It would encompass any DJ. I think that's typically when we get those like when we get the liquor permits and DJ permits, when we sign them, they, they encompass like live music, yada, yada.
But you, all right, you just have to change the word must, I assume, to music.
I can do that.
Only other thing I was thinking about, because I'm just trying to glimpse through the noise ordinance now is the actual, the actual, I think enforcement of the, the noise ordinance. I know a lot of times the police are one of the agencies that are called to, I'm just thinking of.
Department, I think, that monitors the noise ordinance.
Yeah, I just heard something about the health board in there. So I'm wondering if we should have, and I don't want you to, wouldn't want the applicant to have to go every time they're going to have an event to go and get permission from anybody to have an event. But I think it would be good before they had their first event, if they got, they ran this proposal by the, by the health department and by the police department to, you know, say, here's our, here's our typical event we're going to have. You know, 50 people after hours with a DJ or a small band. Is that something that's going to be permissible or not? I think that would be, I, I think as a condition of approval, that somehow we should get something as like a confirmation from those two groups before, before they proceed.
I, I think that makes sense.
Are you referring just for the first one or?
Yeah, just that, you know, in a perfect world, maybe, you know, we would have, you know, my staff, myself would have already referred this to police in the health department. That way they could have weighed in to the commission. We could have done that already. I mean, we probably would have helped a little bit, but you know, we're here, we're, we're at where we're at where we're at. So I think maybe as a condition of approval, we could have language to that effect.
I could probably easily have a sound person come in there and check it out and just get an idea. I, I would suspect that music coming off, what is that, 13 stories is a lot different than being in an apartment over a bar. So you know, maybe one of those sound guys could come in before they even do it and just check it out.
We've, we've done that with a number of the bars. Where they, condition was that they have a sound study.
Yeah.
You could hear it in the whole city, perhaps. You know, if you're over a bar, you hear it over a bar, right? But if it's up on a huge, you could hear it over a wide area.
I've done this before and.
Citywide party. That'd be awesome.
I'm not saying it's bad. I'm just saying, you know.
If I may say, what was interesting is because the building is so high up, before we started that event, I asked the DJ to crank up the music and I was downstairs. And it was shocking that I couldn't hear a thing. But certainly we'll do whatever is necessary.
Why don't, why don't we act on this and leave to the discretion of the staff? The language regarding how the issue of live, of music is addressed. Steve, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm kind of crafting some language now. I was going to email to Michelle as a condition. I can, I can paraphrase if you're, if you're okay with that approach.
Okay. But may I just ask a quick question? I think that the, the condition of, of the live entertainment or music to be within accordance to the noise ordinance, it doesn't that cover it?
Well, I, I think the one thing that we want to avoid, because there's some conflicts within, and it's not necessarily the noise ordinance, it's just outdoor music in general. We want to make sure that I think we're not approving something that, you know, the worst thing I want to have happen is that you guys are having your first event. It's going great. Somebody complains somewhere and then the police show up and shut it down in the middle of your event. So that's why I'd like to get this get everybody on the same page now to avoid problems once you're, you know, booked, booked the venue for three weekends straight or something like that.
Got it. Okay, fair enough.
Here's what I came up with. I can read it and it's pretty short. Says that prior to the use of the roof, the health department and the police department approve the, that's not the best language, is it? That prior to use of the roof for entertainment purposes, the health department and the police department approve, approve the venue, something like that. That's not the best language, but.
But are you referring to everyone? Because you were referring only to the first one before.
I mean, yeah, that's the intent.
Right now, they have the right, they have certain rights right now that I guess the staff have approved. Serving food, having people up there. Where are we not now talking only about music or a DJ?
The, the other aspect is that it's typically now used for tenant use, where this would be for outside organizations to use off hours.
Okay, okay.
But they would approve it once, right?
That's the idea, right?
Because it's, it's so impossible to use photo farm. I have to get the approval of 15 people, right? 15 different departments. I mean, it's unbelievable. And we don't want to set that up for this.
No, no, we don't. So can I have a motion?
But before, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm so sorry, but is it possible to just clarify that part, Steve, to say that this is only on the first time or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm working on that right now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, I think that's like general practice too, when, you know, when we do these live entertainment permits for, for bars and restaurants, it's they, they submit a one-time traffic report that are, not traffic, but a sound report that goes, that complies with the, the sound ordinance and complies with the health department and police department.
You're suggesting that as additional condition?
No, just saying that that's typically just a kind of one-time thing, but not, not every time you're having an event, you need to, you know, go get sign-offs again.
No, that's what I'm saying. But with the sound report part or no?
Yeah, I think for, for the initial, you know, to, to allow the use, that a sound report would be a good idea.
Okay, then let me ask again. Can I have a motion to approve the language in front of us further enhanced by what Steve is in the process of putting together, which I think we understand. Okay, Frank, Frank moves. Is there a second? Rod seconds. Can we do a roll call?
Michelle, you want to take care of that?
And I assume, Steve, it's, it's okay to have both, both Frank and Nick involved since Michael's not voting on this.
As long as you're at seven, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
You want me to put the, the language in or you wanted me to do the roll call?
Um.
What, what do you want me to do?
Roll call.
Rod?
Yes.
Richard?
I'm going to reluctantly vote yes. I love the idea that he is doing, even though I'd be afraid to go there. But I'm, I'm, I just think that all he needs, all he should do is get a sound guy up there to determine whether it's going to be an irritin or not. But I vote yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Galen?
Yes.
Joshua?
It didn't come through, Josh.
Yeah, I didn't hear you.
That was a yes.
Yes.
And then Frank.
Definitely yes.
Okay. It's approved.
All right, thank you. See everyone at the grand opening. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd love to see you there too.
Anytime, you know, anybody want to come and see it? We, we actually walk people around there all the time and showing the roof. Anytime anybody want to come and see before the grand opening, by all means.
It's getting late. Let's handle these very last items. We can close out the meeting. The industrial zone study, the status report. Steve, you want to update us on that?
Sure. The update is really nothing to update yet. Hopefully your next meeting will have more information to give you.
Okay.
That's what I would have said, but I didn't.
The South Norwalk TOD study status report. Is Michael back? Michael, you want to give an update on that?
Well, the, the VHB, they, they did a study when the TOD, like they included a lot of parts of Norwalk into South Norwalk, like Roway and I think the village district, and they're going to go back and check. Or basically sort of like redo things. Because they were basically told that they included sections in South Norwalk that shouldn't have been included.
We, there was a similar issue with the consultant that was doing the, the transit piece of the study. They left out a number of the transit routes that focus on the, on the station. So they're going to make all of those corrections and move, move the study forward. Frankly, it was a little bit disappointing. But you know, there are some talented people and I think once they get this behind them, they'll be able to move the study forward more productively. they'll be able to move the study forward more productively. Zoning regulations update, status report, Steve?
Sure, I have a call with the consultant Monday. They to go over, they did their first. The first task they had was to look at the East Avenue TOD regulations, the draft regs. So they are just about done with that. So I hope to get a report out to you in the next two weeks and then we can put that on an agenda to see how you want to handle that. And the contract, they have the contract language from the Law Department. They're looking at that now. So I expect that that'll get signed within the next couple of weeks or so probably if you want to ballpark around March 1, they should be into the full full, full-blown zoning regs rewrite.
Good.
Steve, I just, with the all of the attention in the in the media now for global warming, you know, green buildings, solar energy, electric cars, you know, GM is going to do electric cars only after at a certain point. I think we need to put some of that in the zoning regs, you know, requiring solar panels, even where it's more expensive.
Galen, why don't you do what I've been doing? And I, every time I have a thought about how the zoning regs ought to change, I'm making a note so that I can share it with the consultants when we meet with them.
Okay.
Because there are a lot of good ideas and I would I would hate for us to miss something because it seemed like a good idea and then we forget about it.
Right.
All right, next item, approval of the minutes for the January 7th meeting. And I have a motion to approve.
Oh, we.
Moves. Who second?
Me.
Oh, okay, Michael, Michael seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, minutes are are approved. I'll remind you unhappily that Monday we have a special meeting to address Norton Park. There's going to be a lot of information shared. If you haven't had an opportunity to look, excuse me, at the information that's been submitted by the neighbors lawyer, you really need to familiarize yourself with that. I'm inclined not to have us vote Monday evening. But to give us some time to think about everything we hear and then voted our our next next meeting.
The the applicant responded to anything that the intervenor sent? Or we, I know Stevie, I know Stevie, I know you emailed it back and forth and me about this. But do they have a deadline or are they just going to send it when they can? They have not provided any response yet. They, my guess is you won't get it in. I'm hoping you get it by Monday. Ideally, if if we could ballpark it, that the applicant would give a quick summary at the beginning. Then Attorney Green and his team would present their findings and their materials. Then the kick it over to the public for them to have their say and ideally then that, I'm guessing that's going to probably be well after nine o'clock, then close that for the night and then let the applicant rebut at a follow-up meeting and then you guys can take action when you're ready.
Depending how the timing goes, I feel a little bit differently about it. If we if we, Steve's probably right. If it goes beyond nine o'clock and that's all we can accomplish, then maybe that's all we should accomplish. But the fact is that the the developer has had that those comments from Attorney Green's consultants now for as long as we have. Right. Had, they've had time to think of what their response ought to be. And it's a shame to drag it out unnecessarily.
Right.
But is there, but I also, I also don't don't want to give the sense that we're rushing this.
No, we're not rushing it. Believe me, we're not rushing it. Oh, my God.
Yeah, does it make sense to just start with the attorney, the new, the whatever? Intervener attorney? And I don't think we need a summary of the project at this point. We've had that summary 17 times.
Well, we don't need a summary of the project, but there may be new information they want to share. We should give them that opportunity.
Okay, so it's very limited new information, which may be not much right into the intervenor, into public hearing, and then depending on where we are, rebuttal or not.
How was the North Health Department said today?
Right, we got a letter from
Yeah, I mean.
The Health Commission, and we got a letter from the mayor's bike pad, bike pad committee is.
Lou, I have a question, because this is such a high-profile issue.
Application.
I may.
Let's just be careful with the.
I know, I'm an alternate. Nick is also an alternate. I don't want to have a discussion in such a public forum on who can and cannot vote. Maybe prior to the meeting, you select an alternate if needed. And if I am not selected to be on the panel, I'd like to give my thoughts to the commission in a private setting. Whether it's allowed in email or whether it's not allowed at all, but I would like to, if I'm not going to vote, I still want to express it could be in just us in an executive session.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't believe that's permitted. Am I right, Steve?
Yeah. If it's not, I apologize for asking. I just don't know the bylaws. I apologize.
Right to ask.
Yeah, so it also, really quickly, so who's ever seated, so Stephanie's no longer on the commission. So there'll be one alternate appointed to fill her seat for that application. Once the hearing is closed, only the seated members can can speak. There can be no communication outside of the public forum. It's not, you know, once it's closed, the public can't comment. But only the commission members that are voting can speak to that particular application at that point in time.
But Steve, before it's closed, all of us, you know, including both alternates, can ask questions and say what, you know.
Right, that's correct.
So, you know, there's still value.
Absolutely. And you will still have an opportunity to express your opinion.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that you can express your opinion, but you have to be careful that it's related to something that's being spoken about there.
Yeah, exactly.
Because you don't want to influence the other members.
Usually when we go to vote, there's the final comments of the commissioners and if someone has an opinion at that time, it's usually expressed, not during the Q and A. And that's, listen, I respect the commission. I would never, that's why I'm asking now in a very private setting versus in an open forum. I just want to make sure I'm following proper policy procedures and not embarrassing us as a whole.
Right. All right, we have comments of the director. Steve, anything else you wish to share?
Nothing further.
Comments of commissioners? See you Monday. Right.
I'd just like to buttress what Nick said, that we really make sure that the applicant just stays on new material and not a re-summit.
Okay, I'll I'll talk to them tomorrow and make, I'll tell them to be very brief and concise and also ask them about what their response is and when they'll be ready to put that forward.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Oh, moved.
Moved.
Okay, we've got three, Galen, Josh, Nick.
Give it to Galen.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. See you Monday night.
See you.